Application is to construct 66 dwelling units off the south side of Northfield Road between Massachusetts Ave, map 057 in parcel 0031 and Northfield Road, map 037 parcel 0009. Owners are John and David Selba at 227 Lewis Wharf, Boston, Mass. 02110, and Robert Laverne, trustee, Lunenburg nominee trust, 880 Winter Street, Suite 340, Waltham, Mass. 0241. 02451, I apologize. Application is Frost Tech Energy LLC, 46 Pine Street, PO Box 5515, Beverly, Mass. 01915. Copies are on file in the planning office. Notice of said hearings will be duly posted at the usual posting places. And it was in the newspaper? And the butters did get certified meal? Because it had been so long since the last public hearing, we did redo a meal into all the butters. And now what we're looking to do is we're going to open it and then we're actually closing the public hearing because the two peer review, our peer review engineer and the applicant's engineer are still working on plans, so they weren't ready to present it to us as of yet. So they asked for continuation. So I'm looking just to continue this. Do we have a date of when?
June 9th.
June 9th, we're going to have it?
But the time is yet to be determined.
The time, okay. So it's going to be for June 9th, 2014. We just have not designated the time as of yet. So if you just check on the Lunenburg Planning Board page at the town of Lunenburg, the time will be there closer to that date. Again, that's June 9th, 2014. So with that, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing to go back into our regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And if you could pass down your, I feel like it's around top of me. If you could pass down your Highfield Village folders, so Marjorie has them for the 09 meeting.
Thank you.
All right. 6:40, right on schedule. We are now going to get a overview for the new school, middle school combo, and Mr. Warner is going to present. They usually do it right in front of the stairs there where the map is, and that way the camera can go to both you and...
Good evening. My name is David Warner. I'm the principal at Warner Larson Landscape Architects. We are on behalf of the School Building Committee, working for Tape Associates, the architects of the building. We're landscape architects. So we're responsible for developing the site.
Can you grab the microphone, Mr. Warner? They can't hear you at home. We can hear you great.
How much time do I have?
There is no one after you? So as long as it takes. Oh, Mr. Prowlis.
About as long as it reaches, I think. Nope, there we go. Perfect. For the record, my name is David Warner. I'm principal at Warner Larson Landscape Architects in Boston. We're working with Tape Associates, the architects, for the new high school, combined high school, middle school building. And I have a plan that shows the overall site and surrounding context, and I also have a plan that zooms in a little bit more and shows the proposed work in a little bit more detail. But this shows Massachusetts Ave across the bottom, and Oak Avenue up here on the north side, and then we've got Main Street over on the west, and you can see Northfield Road over here on the east. This parcel right here is about 52 acres, according to the assessor's office, and it includes the Turkey Hill Middle School, the existing high school building, and the Passios School Building here, as well as the administration building. The proposed project is to build a new high school, middle school building on the two fields up above, and then in a second phase, tear down the existing building and recreate the ball fields, the athletic fields, down here on the south side of the campus. And as part of this project, we are proposing to create a driveway that connects to the existing driveway infrastructure at this point in front of Passios. This new driveway will continue all the way through, and there would be a new driveway opening up here on Oak Avenue, and that would serve the transportation needs for the combined middle school, high school. There's a drop-off loop for cars and a drop, separate drop-off loop for buses, and all the staff parking up here on the, close to the building would be at the same grade as the main entrance. And then at the low, the existing lower level where the parking lot is to the east of the existing building, that would remain a student parking lot, and that is connected up to the building via these walkways. We have a fire lane that makes its way around the back of the building here. It would be restricted access from this point over to this point. We know that this memorial and the concession restroom building is very significant to the town, and as are the mature trees in that area, we're doing everything possible to protect that. So this would remain intact here. The only upgrades to that area would be some lighting improvements that have been requested. The fire lane weaves its way down between the existing game field, synthetic turf field and track, and the concession building, and we've worked very closely with the town parks department and the school to make sure that that's done in a way that's acceptable to them. Part of the project will include complete reconstruction of the tennis courts and the addition of a new basketball court. And then a little bit more detail on the fields. These, this field here will be completely fenced in. It includes a game field for, with new bleachers, 580 seats and press box. That replaces the football field up here. The existing football field is located right here underneath the building, and this is going to be fully accessible. The access would be through the existing gate at the memorial to the ticket booth, and at that point, people could either go into this facility or continue into the track and the field complex. The field to the south is not all fenced in. This is the, this is the fenced-in spectator area. This field down here will be a soccer field, and that would be built, most of that field would be built in the initial phase of the project, so that it will offset the, some of the use of the ball fields up here when the school breaks ground. Let's see, as far as lighting is concerned, these fields will have sports lighting on them because they're replacing the existing fields up here that are lit. The new driveways will have, this driveway will have a new set of lights going down it, which will be the full cutoff LED, energy efficient fixtures. The pedestrian walkways that serve the front of the building will all have pedestrian-scale LED fixtures, and then around the back of the building, we have some additional lighting back here. And of course, all of the exterior spaces around the building will be lit. There will be a loading dock on the end of the building here, and there'll be service access at this point to get into the new high school facility. And very large vehicles that come in here, like tractor-trailers, would need to exit all the way through and drive out this way. So we've accommodated for all-size vehicles that would be serving this facility. The parking over here at Passios, a lot of that's going to be maintained intact, but there'll be, there'll be some reconfiguration where that parking comes in and connects to the new driveway. But at this point, this is where the new driveway and all of the existing driveways will meet. No work is proposed out here with the exception of some utility connections and a new school sign. That school sign will be in conformance with the bylaw. It's going to be, have illumination, but it will be lit from lights outside shining on it. We'll have a similar sign up here on Oak Avenue. And this parking lot will be lit large, the same way that the driveway would be lit, with the taller LED fixtures. No lights are proposed on the tennis or basketball courts. And let me see if there's anything else in particular. Just as an overview, as far as timing, we have dropped off the departmental review drawings, eight sets over at the planning board's office today. And we met last Tuesday with your review engineer from Whitman and Bingham, and our, the engineers on our team from Niche Engineering were there as well. And so there's been some preliminary dialogue just to understand what expectations are with regard to the development plan review. We would like to request this evening, with the board's approval, that we could maintain that dialogue with them throughout this process, so that we could streamline any communications. The, the rest of the timeframe, as we understand it, is that we would be back before you on June 9th, after their review is complete, after the tech meeting with the various departments in town on May 20th, where we could give you the comprehensive presentation and address any questions at that point. But what we'd like to be able to do is have that open dialogue, so that we don't have a lot of letters going back and forth, but it would be a lot better to address questions proactively, to make sure that we're on the same page. Let me move to the larger plan, so you can get a little bit better view. So this is oriented in the same direction, north being up, and it allows you to see in a little bit more detail just how everything is connecting through the site, from the parking areas to the walkways to the front of the building. There'll be a new main entrance on the west side of the building here, serving the high school and the middle school. All of the students will come in that point because it's a central point of administration. But then we have a classroom wing over here and a classroom wing there, middle school and high school. The gym, fieldhouse would be here, the auditorium, and then music. This point, there's a greenhouse freestanding structure down off the south end of the building. And the reason for that, there's a couple of different reasons for that disconnect. Originally, it was proposed to be attached, but because this project is phased, the drainage system that's going to be put in up here needs to connect to the existing drainage down here in, in an early phase. But this greenhouse cannot be built until the existing school is demolished, and you can see at this point, they are actually overlapping. So that's the reason why it's separate, so that the drainage system can come through here. It actually saves the town about $15,000 or $16,000 from having to put in a temporary drainage provision and tear it out later, so. And as far as the grades, just to give you an overall lay of the land, because there is a lot of topographic change on the site. This area of the site is, is the high end of the land, and then down here over this way is lower. And the existing building is right here. On the west side of the existing building, there's a parking lot and an embankment. That is going to be excavated out to this point, so that these fields will be down at the lower level associated with this parking lot. The grade change will come across through here, and the building will sit up at the higher elevation. So everything that we've designed on this is fully ADA and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board compliant, meaning that the walkway connections, even this driveway around here, has been graded in such a way that it will serve as a walkway, making those connections. And then to the back of the, of the building. This corner here is the mechanical area for the building, where all the, well, the transformer and there'll be a generator on the site, serving the building. And then, let's see, should come down this way. Here's the concession building again, the memorial gate. We have designed this parking lot with a drop-off loop, but you'll notice that's kind of different than what exists out there now. The existing parking lot is largely intact like this, but then it expands in behind the existing building. Because we had to terminate that in this width, this 120-foot width, we ended up making this large loop, so that visiting teams that arrive on buses will be able to turn around smoothly without cars in the way. But it also serves well for any of, like I said, any service vehicles that come out and have to exit out this way will be able to navigate that parking lot easily. And I think that's, that's pretty much as an overview. I gave you the, the timeline that we're looking at, and you know, this departmental plan review is something that, that the town departments will be seeing this probably for the third time, many of them. We, we are right now in the construction document phase of drawing production, but we've met with them in the early stages as well, the schematic design and design development stages. It's something that is pretty much required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is, you know, your partner, the town's partner in funding this project. But it's also advantageous for the entire team and the town to be incorporating the input from these departments as the project is being designed. So for instance, the fire lane width, the location of hydrants, the location of access and connections to the building for stand pipes and fire alarms, all of that type of thing, has been discussed in, in detail with them. So I'm anticipating this process will go smoothly, and you know, I think even like the surveillance and the, and the access around the building, we've gotten into a lot of detail on that. For instance, we have a gate proposed here and a gate there, but the police department wants to be able to have the flexibility to drive around there without necessarily opening a gate, to be able to get access quickly and to be able to get, go frequently as needed to ensure the safety and security of the place, so. But these gates could always be closed. So when the school needs this closed for a function, people are coming here, buying tickets and going into this facility to watch a game, they can close it off and have pedestrian control at that point. So the specifics as far as parking and dimensions are all in the application that we've submitted to you as a, as a highlight. The existing parking for the existing high school is 281 spaces, and being a campus, the way we calculated that was looking at the ones that are contiguous with the building. Gets a little bit maybe of a gray area where they're in the shared space over by Passios. We understand that there are about 30 spaces that are needed for operation of the Passios School, so we've counted those separately. The proposed parking in this vicinity that you can see on this plan is a total of 308 spaces, and by calculating the number as required by zoning, we come up with 246. But we know that it's important to accommodate the largest activity, largest use to the extent possible, and that would be like a homecoming, for instance, when there may be a need for up to 500 cars, and that quantity was presented to us by the school from past experience. So we count, and they make, they, I guess, I understand the community takes advantage of the parking at Turkey Hill School and over by the senior center or wherever, the library for events like that. And we've counted up all the parking spaces on this campus going all the way out to the teen center over here and Boys and Girls Club, and we've counted 508 spaces. So that can demonstrate at least that there are enough spaces on the site that those events don't need to spill out onto parallel parking on Mass Ave, for instance. And then as, as far as dimensions are concerned, we greatly exceed any front, side, or rear setbacks. The height of the building as proposed is 40 feet. The architect gave me 39 feet, 11 and 1/2 inches. It's basically 40 feet. The height in your residence A is stated as 38. So that is a, about a two-foot variable there. It's our understanding that this project has been, from the zoning enforcement officer, determined as under the Dover Amendment, that is exempt, but that we are presenting all of these details relative to your bylaw and to see how they compare. The, the building height is, is one that varies, but it hasn't been presented in the submission as a request for a variance or waiver, based upon the interpretation of the educational use. All the other details with the development plan review are included in our submission today that we dropped off at, at the office, and it includes a stormwater report, erosion sedimentation control, dust controls during construction. And I guess maybe the only other thing I haven't really touched on is buffering, and we have, as far as, I mean, the site, the building construction is very centrally located within the site, as you can see, but there are some, this closest, there's this close adjacency up here, that we know that the School Building Committee has been in communication with this abutter with regard to a request for a fence and some evergreen. Right now, this is all wide-open athletic fields, and so at this point, the building is about 57 feet off of the property line, well in excess of the 20-foot rear yard or side yards, or smaller side yard setback. But we are putting a dense evergreen planting between this lot and the new building for buffering and accommodating and incorporating the, the fence along there. I think, if I haven't covered anything that you'd like me to talk about, please let me know.
Do you want to start with questions, Matthew? Do you have any questions?
Sure, of course, always. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, no, I think...
Yeah, okay. The other one's better. Yeah, I'm sorry. The, this looks great. The, the parking, it looked efficient. It looked, it looked less than what was required for that kind of thing before. Has that changed since the last time that you've presented, that that has been presented to planning? I don't remember seeing a drop-off loop.
No, we really haven't had a change in this area. This is, this has been established in the early feasibility drawings for this.
I guess I was referring to the drop-off loop at the student center?
The ball, the field.
Student parking area?
Oh.
Is that new?
We're not proposing anything over here at the student.
The, the loop at the football field?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so this point down here?
Yes.
This was added as a means to accommodate buses turning around, and it was extended to the north. I think the number of spaces in this lot was originally 134, 135 or so, so there were a few spaces reduced in doing so, but we understand that this lot right now doesn't fill up.
Well, how many student parking spaces are there now?
128 in the proposed plan.
Also, you mentioned where the truck, where the delivery trucks exit onto 2A. Where do they enter?
They could ent, actually entering, let me use this plan here, off of Mass Ave, this would be the primary route coming into the service area, and most of the vehicles that would be exiting here, except for the largest ones, would go out the same way. So this is intended, and it's designed specifically so that a tractor-trailer which cannot make this turn to the left, they, they would pull in here, back into the loading dock, and then drive out, would flow in a clockwise direction all the way through.
Sure. So, so basically, the only, what, what traffic will be entering and exiting using Oak Ave?
That would largely be staff. Students can't get there. This is just a dedicated entry and exit as it exists today. So this connection here would serve the parking lot and the drop-offs in this area, so it's, it's something that would be used really by, by staff and parents.
Parents, okay. Thank you.
Damon, are you on?
Not right now, no.
I have a question, and I don't know if it's, it's you. My question is the act that goes to all the sporting events. That front field where the soccer field is, and this might not even be you, Dave, will they be using the restroom's concession stand over in the old, which will now be the new field, the old field, when it's built?
I think that it, the intent is that anybody who's using these fields would be able to. It's a long way to go.
Right, that's, so...
So whether the need arises and they might need, you know, to put a portable toilet out there for a particular event or whatever, but the main game field is here. So like when there are a lot of spectators coming, we have the 580 seats here. This is the game, this is where all the games would be played.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Right, that'll be our main football, high school football field now.
Yes, but also for soccer.
Yep.
Yeah, it's why, the athletic director specifically requested that this be 210 feet wide, so that it could be used as a soccer game field as well. So this would really be for practice, for the most part, not a lot of spectators. I mean, it's possible we've left enough room there for portable bleachers to be put out there, but there are no portable bleachers in the design.
And concession stand?
No.
Okay. Now, because, and then again, I don't know if it's this or that, would be a whole nother unit of the activities club with the parking rec, because what'll happen is with the, the boosters, that's where they make their money, and if people have to walk there, as far as you know, they're, they're not going to purchase. And then being on 2A Mass Ave and driving by the front of that and having outhouses in, in the main strip of our community isn't something, so I don't know, is that something that we would work with you on, or is that really parking recs and nothing to do with the school building?
Well, I think, I think that's something to come back to the School Building Committee with, and I'll certainly bring that up with the architect and the School Building Committee. And I know that the intent is that this concession building will be, being centrally located between these two facilities, would be used, you know, as the primary bathroom and, and for concessions. This field is certainly further away from it, but it would be really no different than, than the track. The, the students that are practicing the field events associated with track, discus, shot put, everything down here, that's also pretty far away from the concession building. And, and so...
No, the concession building's right on that. The, the, the new track that's built currently?
Yes.
The concession stands right there?
Right.
In the bathrooms, oh, okay.
Yeah, but the, the field events that are practiced on the lower practice field below there?
Oh, oh, over the hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
That lower field is used actively for spring track field events?
Field hockey.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, and also discus, shot put, and that sort of thing. So...
Thank you.
All right.
Another question. On the, on the blown-up one, it looks like there's a retaining wall proposed along the, the main field?
That's correct.
What is the maximum height of that?
We are about seven or eight feet at this point.
Seven, seven to eight feet?
Yes. And the reason for that, as I was mentioning, the grade change across here, these fields are essentially flat. I mean, we do have a crown to them for proper surface drainage and an under drainage system, but as you come across from this side of the site with a level condition and the grade change, at this point, we're actually very restricted between the Passios building and the tennis courts to fit all of these pieces in here. So that would be one of, what we're proposing, it would, it would be one of these cast stone, with like a faux rock finish. Ready Rock is one brand out there, but they're large stackable concrete blocks that look attractive as a stacked stone wall. So to describe them, they're large rectangular blocks that have a kind of a rock face to them.
Was there any consideration to making it usable, like a badminton or handball, or any kind of a court that needed walls?
Well, the thing is, is that we, in terms of the cross-section through here, every single one of these elements, this parking, the tennis courts, the fields, and the driveway and this parking with the building over there, those are all designed to their minimums, so there's no space really to insert another program element.
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else on the plan?
No.
And my question, because you and I talked on the phone, and our goal was that on May 27th, you were going to come back. Is that now June 9th, or are you on for both?
No, June 9th, because the...
Perfect.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Do you have any? I'm sorry. I was so focused on him. All right, no, that's a great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all I had. Do you have any? I'm sorry. I was so focused on him. All right, no, that's a great job. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful job. Does anybody have, I'm sorry, I can ask the, it's not really public comment, but does anybody, Paula, please.
Thank you. Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. I just have a question on the roadway and where it is in relationship to the, actually have two. In relationship to the concession stand, I'm there all the time with my granddaughter. Does that mean that the, the cobbled area, which is now the patio, is going to be torn up? Or where is that road in relationship to the patio, to the, to the columns for the concession stand?
Please, Steve.
The, this will be used primarily for foot traffic. And when there are events, this gate would be closed and there'll be no vehicle access down there, so it will be a safe area. The pavers that currently exist along this side of the concession building will be taken up. They'll be reused to enlarge the terrace. There's a patio on the concession and restroom doorway side, so those will be enlarged in that area. And then this, there'll be a low retaining wall along the side. And so this will actually become an overlook, you know, down onto the track and the field area. This area up behind the existing bleachers will be paved now, and it will be a good place for spectators to watch as well. I know, from what we've been told, there's a lot of people who bring their folding chairs, and this becomes a really actively used area. So, from a safety standpoint, vehicles will be restricted at this point with a closed gate during sporting events. And this gate up here could also be closed. From a practical standpoint, there's an 18-foot wide area just off of the corner of the concession building here that would be paved as a driveway. But it would be available and accessible to pedestrians and spectators during sporting events.
I want you're going to have to take it in anyway. So, question on, on the overview of the site and looking at the smaller plan, where you've proposed the driveways, and you talked about offsets, et cetera. Do you have a new proposed lot line in relationship to the Passios building yet incorporated into this plan, or is that something to be determined later?
No, there are no new interior lot lines proposed on this. I know that the, the town is looking at options and other uses for the Passios building. What we've done is we've minimized our work along this side so that it doesn't preclude any other type of development beyond what, I mean, what, we're basically just doing the paving and the utilities necessary to allow the new high school, middle school to function. And we're leaving as much infrastructure in place here so that it doesn't waste money that then, you know, for instance, if that building gets repurposed, or if the building is replaced, we don't know what the future will bring with regard to that. When a need or a use for this is determined, there is, you know, this whole area in here could be delineated at that time as a separate parcel if necessary.
As you all know, this has been one of my primary concerns as a member of the Board of Selectmen, is that we're looking at repurposing this building. And in looking at this site plan, and I don't know, I, I'm very curious to see the detailed plans up close, but one of the concerns that I have is, you know, obviously, parking in the town center is, is an issue. And it looks like there's going to be extremely limited parking with the Passios building after this configuration. Additionally, I'd like to understand what the potential impacts and what the required offsets are in order for the high school to maintain the configuration that's proposed, and what that leaves for the Passios building as far as lot lines. So if there's any way, you know, town meeting and the school is, is proposing to repurpose and, and, you know, give the Passios building to the town so that it can be repurposed. But we need to understand what those lot line configurations need to be. And so, what I, my hope was, is by doing this peer review, in addition to looking at the school project, and I understand this is the school project, but my concern is we need to look at it from a town perspective so that we can make sure that we can repurpose the Passios building and don't put undue restrictions on that because of the site plan. So I just would like to understand what that lot line needs to be and, and what that allows for parking, et cetera, because, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good distance away, and I haven't looked at it in detail, but it looks like we're going to be pretty limited. So I'd just like to understand that and what the lot lines need to be. So when you're looking at the plan, you know, I hope that the planning board will look at that, not only from the school perspective, but from the town perspective.
Well, and, and I looked at that as, when you're pulling into TC Passios now, where the big circle is that you go around, would that be able to come out and now that becomes a parking lot in the front of the building to gain the parking spaces? I don't know. An engineer would have to say if that could be dug up and-
Right, and I guess that's what I'd like to understand, is what, what land is needed, required?
Yeah, I guess-
Where does that lot, lot line end up?
We need to find out from the school or whoever, is, is there a minimum acreage requirement for that school facility? So when we carve off another parcel, is that road kind of a good defining property line? Or, I think that's what you're saying, right?
Right.
Yes.
I don't know who gives us that answer. I assume the school knows, or someone, a part of the school building committee knows what that is. But I think, what I do like about the way the road is now, it does form a nice barrier with the retaining wall is going to be in between the road and the field, so it makes a nice kind of natural barrier. If that does end up something besides a school use or municipal use, that breaks it up in that way. Also, we've determined through the building reuse committee that the area to the north of the top of the page, above the Passios there, there's no real wetlands in there, so parking could be added up there as part of that reuse. And that's also assuming that that building stays intact the way that it is now. It could be partially demolished, completely demolished, we don't know, depending on, hopefully the idea is that it's not the town paying for that demolition, it's, we're getting another, through a request for proposal and getting a project that everyone can get on board with, get that building into someone else's hands besides the town. But that ranges from either the Flack Collaborative, which is an educational institution taking over that building, or going more commercially than that. But we don't know that yet, that's to be determined. But still, we need to find out basically where that property line needs to be.
Exactly.
And we can move forward from there.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Carluck, 50 Sunset Lane. Just on that back road, I understand there's going to be gates so it can be closed off for sporting events. But will they normally be open? And if they're normally open, why wouldn't the students use that to get to the parking lot?
It's, it's going to be an enforcement issue the police department will have to address. They've specifically requested that the gates be open for ease of access, but the gates are there. So administratively, the school could close them at certain hours of the day or certain time periods. It's, it's not uncommon. Most high schools in particular need the fire lane all the way, all the way around the building, as well as service to the back of the building. It's usually the case, service is being on the side or the rear of the building. So, I think the fact that the gates are in, they're going to be built, at this end, it's actually two steel posts that have it, the ability to have a chain pulled across. This one down here is an actual gate that serves as pedestrian barrier during sporting events. It then comes down to an administrative function, whether the school and the police working together need to have them closed. There would be signage on both ends, and that would be stating authorized vehicles only, the driveway width being 18 feet is not as wide as a normal driveway, which is 24 feet wide. So it'll be very clear as you approach from either end that you're not supposed to be driving down there.
Yeah, and that was correct. At the March 12th meeting at the school, we had a, a meeting at 9:00 AM, and Chief Marino did ask-
Yes.
-that the gates be open because of, for safety with the limited police we have on duty to get out of a car and unlock the gates and get back in. He wanted to be able to have that drive around, because you originally did have them closed.
Yep.
That was a request you're obeying, working with on our end.
Phyllis Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. I and many other Lunenburg residents really enjoy the night sky, so I wanted to make sure that the light is structured so that it minimizes light pollution.
The lighting, the lighting that is proposed, the LED fixtures are, the bulbs themselves are fully contained below a solid housing, so they only shine down. And no light shines above a horizontal plane from the light. So, they're dark sky compliant. They're also very, besides being energy efficient, they are very good at providing even distribution of light. So, it makes it easier to see things in the dark, at night, at lower levels of light. So it's a better distribution than the traditional high-pressure sodium or metal halide. The sports lighting here are also going to be very efficient and very focused, but those will be very similar to the lights that are out there now on the sports field. So, they'll be only shining when the sporting events are occurring. So, that's, that's the difference. I mean, the parking lot and driveway lights will be happening, coming on in the evening, every evening, and the sporting, sports lighting would be coming on just for the sporting events. The technology with the, the lighting here, I believe these over here are pretty new, the Musco lighting system. These four poles are being proposed as the same type of fixture. So, if you've seen what those lights, how, how those are performing at night, it would be similar to that.
All right, well, I thank you. Again, great job. Thank you very much for coming. And we will see you on June 9th. Do we have minutes in the little bucket? I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes that were emailed to us for review of April 22nd, 2014.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You mean, May 14th, or, sorry, no, April, April 22nd?
April 22nd.
Okay.
All in favor, do we?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the next set of minutes that were emailed to us for review were for April 28th, 2014.
Motion to approve the minutes between-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. And then, I'm sorry, then we have minutes from May 3rd, 2014, that were emailed to us for review.
Motion to approve the-
Five, 3, 14.
Yeah, the minutes of May 3rd, 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great, thank you so much. Now we have committee reports. Matthew, MJTC.
There has been no meeting since our last meeting.
Okay. MRPC, we had a meeting two weeks ago, and most of the topic there that evening was MRPC is moving. They're looking to go across the street, so we spent a lot of time discussing that. Nothing else really new came out of the meeting as of last week, two weeks ago. School building committee, Nathan.
I don't believe there's been a meeting since our last meeting. There's a meeting coming up on Wednesday. And, yeah, make a report at our next meeting.
Perfect, thank you so much. Damon, building reuse.
All right. So, building reuse committee, moving forward, we've formed two little task force subcommittees, I guess. One of them looking at this building, the town hall, and what are the options moving forward, how we could reallocate space requirements, and also looking at estimated costs and what it would take to get this building repurposed and working to house all our town offices. And the other task force, which I think needs to be assigned still, but will look at how we're, how we can move forward in marketing the town and marketing these buildings and putting together requests for proposal for what is the potential use of these buildings, the Ritter Building, such going, such on. But just some stats that Jamie put together for the building reuse committee to explain the importance of what we're doing, and also to reflect back on the importance of what we have to do for a village district. The building reuse committee is looking at six buildings, a total of 143,000 square feet on 28.7 acres of land. The cost of the town per year for those buildings is $180,000 to keep them running, and that doesn't include any capital costs to repair them. And the cost to demolish them would be in the hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars, so. And the big setback and why that puts pressure on us is because all those buildings are currently zoned in Residence A. And to fill out those buildings' potential for someone who's not the town to own them and potentially generate some more revenue for the town as we move forward and try to repurpose them, they really can't stay Residence A and be productive for anyone. So I have more to talk about the village district when we get to that, but I'll wait for that point in time.
Nathan, did you have a-
He asked on me.
I saw it.
Six buildings we're talking about, Ritter, Passios, Town Hall, the old primary-
Brooks.
Did you get Brooks?
Brooks, and-
We've kind of reconsidered the, the old primary building, the annexed building, as, we keep looking at that as, that's probably going to end up in our purview as well.
What's the annex, is that the, with his role?
That's the old primary.
The old primary, old high school, whatever you want to call it, there was a lot of things. It's a big building back then.
Okay, yes, so, so Ritter, Passios, that big primary.
Oh, you already have that.
The primary isn't part of your list, eventually.
Eventually, we, we, yeah.
Nathan?
I can't hear.
Sorry about that. So, okay, I'm just- Okay, let me go down the list.
What are the six, yeah?
And I, so, Ritter.
Okay.
Brooks. That building, the primary school building, what was considered because we, we feel like that's going to need some attention.
Sure.
Town Hall?
Uh, the Town Hall. The-
Passios.
Passios building. Up to five. No, the DPW building was thrown in there too. Not that that's a front burner thing, but it's just, it's out there, it's an underutilized parcel and-
The, the one down on West?
The West Street, yeah. Got it. Not, like I said, not front burner, big issue, but it is a town-owned property that's-
Gotcha. Now, in theory, if the town, if the town took action to take possession of that gas station, that could end up kind of in this-
It could, and, um, not, not that we want to jump to conclusions and say we're going to do that, but yeah, again, is, if that would be Residence A, I think, is what that's zoned. And just lot size, setbacks, everything of that nature, that's, you really, the parcel can't be used for anything repurposed as far as Residence A. So, again, yeah, if we're going to take that on, it would be advantageous for us to have this village district in place.
Cool.
Yeah, and I think we'd want to look at the chief, the old chief house and the old, the consignment shop, because those, a couple years ago, I think, three or four years ago, we were going to go, they were going to go to town meeting to change that. And they didn't, because people on the board thought it was spot zoning. So we, we didn't go through with that. But that's something as well, that we would have to look at those two buildings.
So, the reasons why the village district is important is, is piling up.
Hmm?
Yes.
Yes, it is. All right. Thank you, good report.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Damon before we?
Nothing good for now, that's awesome.
All right. Matthew, agricultural commission.
Same, same situation, no meeting since our last.
And their bylaw was passed?
And their bylaw was passed.
At town meeting, so that's a good thing. Perfect. All right, new business. Development status reports, middle school, high school project verbal update. Well, I think we just got that. Or do we have more to add in the folder?
I don't think so.
All right. Yeah, this is the folder. All right, next we have Highfield Village. Again, that is continued till Ju- that is continued till June 6th. June 9th. And then we have Force Corp., 305 Lemmonster Shirley Road, engineer report. But before you give your report, were you there too at town meeting when Jimmy Marino had said, I know Matthew was there, were you there, Nathan? We had talked to Chief Marino at town meeting, he had come over to Matthew and I, and I don't know if you were there, Nathan, but he and the DPW director went over to Force Corp. and spoke with the owner, and the owner was not opposed to moving the fence back and taking more of that dirt out, so they're, they're looking to do that. And Jack and the chief are working with the owner of Force Corp. on that. So I just wanted to give you a readout on that, and then whatever you have, because that was verbal at town meeting, so.
Okay, I did talk to MRPC. They did send over the traffic count information. I don't know if that's in your packet or not, but it's... So we received that today. I think that you would probably go to the board of selectmen to nominate a site that you're wanting to have traffic counts for, because it has to be signed from the chief elected official.
So we would need to go in front of the board of selectmen and ask them to do this for 305 Lemmonster Shirley Road?
Yes, I do believe so. Is this the normal protocol for your town? Okay.
So what I would do is ask Marjorie to put us on, to get in contact with the selectmen's office and get us on the agenda, and then we can?
To nominate that site.
To nominate that site.
For a traffic count, yes.
Wonderful. Does everybody agree? I don't want to talk to the board?
I don't understand why Ms. Bertram couldn't simply do that.
Come on, Paula, because she's only one member of a board, you'd have to go to the board.
I also just want to suggest, I know Sherri over at MRPC is in the process of putting together potential sites. If there are any other sites that are on your radar, it might make sense to incorporate them. And when I met with Brad Harris from MRPC, you know, whether or not you want a traffic study, whether you want a speed study, whether you want a type of vehicle, they can, they can also determine a vehicle, type of vehicle classification. So, you know, determine what it is that you want, and what he said is just send over a letter with this request, so.
I also talked to Brad, and the program that was mentioned at the last meeting, the local curve systematic approach to safety, do you remember there was a curve program? And he did ask one of his transportation planners, George Snow, to contact the state to see if that program was still accepting sites, and they are. So that may be something to do through the selectmen's office as well. Actually, Paula, I can give you this, George gave me this, so. And he said that they were, so here, let me give this to you. You're welcome.
All right, so you're running with the curve program?
Well, the question is whether or not you want the curve program, if you have any curves that are on your radar. I mean, obviously, you guys are the planners, and, you know, we can work with Jack from a road perspective. I had mentioned this program, we had talked about it, and whether or not, I don't know what the situation on Lemmonster Shirley Road, there was talk about the curve coming from, so whether or not this would be eligible. But this program really is just for signage. It is not for any kind of road improvements, but it is for signage, it's for guardrails, it's low-cost improvements to increase safety on curves. And this is on all types of roads, it's not just federal aid-eligible roads, it's any road in town. So I'm certainly going to let Jack know that it is, it is still accepting applications, because the deadline was April 19th, but apparently they still have some room, so. But whether or not that's something you guys are interested in or not, you know, but if you are, let us know.
Yes, go ahead, Nathan.
Yes, so thanks a lot for that information. I would say, so, I mean, first of all, I think there's some, some good things happening here. I mean, first you reported, talking to chief, you talked about lowering the grade there, retaining wall, that's going to improve the site triangles there a lot. That's great. Is, we talked about, even if that is the case, and that'll be a big improvement, I think all the assumptions are still based on a certain road speed, and so having people aware of the road speed there of 30, which is significantly lower than the normal rural road speed.
I just want to caution you, because Brad had the same caution that Chief Marino did, that once they do the, the speed check, and once they do the vehicle classification and all of that, since it's not posted now, and it's based on 89%, the average of 89% of the traffic, so be aware that the speed limit could go up versus go down. Just be aware of that.
The speed limit could go up regardless of the site distances involved?
I'm sure that would be taken into consideration, but both Brad and I believe Chief Marino cautioned you that by doing these studies, you could actually bring the speed limit up.
Up, based on?
Right, and this road isn't marked, correct? There is no speed limit posting. So there's a whole process, as the chief talked about, that has to go through mass DOT. We can't just put a speed limit up. So, so, you know, the first step in that process is to do the traffic study, but understand that you may not end up with a 30 mile an hour speed limit, you may end up with something significantly higher. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but, but just be aware that that is on the table.
Well, yeah, I guess my feeling about that is, if, a couple of things. One is, I mean, so that, we talked about the safe curves program and the state helping with signage there. Personally, I guess, if the, the light of the DOT got shined on this corner, and they decided, and they did the traffic study, and they looked at it, and they said, oh, you know, it should be 50, I mean, this is going to be the DOT looking at it, they're going to be looking at all the, do safety standards, then that's probably what it should be, you know. But, you know, I get, I, I guess I trust that if it goes up, it'll be for a good reason. Most likely, my guess is, the problem I have with the situation, the reason why I want that light to get shown there and this to get done is because right now there's no posted speed limit, there's no enforceable white sign. So I would just like a careful review by the DOT than an enforceable white sign there, so everybody knows what it is, everybody knows that that will be enforced, and that it's been, whatever speed is on that sign is what, you know, the foremost experts have decided is safe.
And I would certainly make that clear to the selectmen, that that's what you're looking for, so that when we send over the request to MRPC, it's very clear what it is that we're requesting. So if you can, in your request to the selectmen, outline exactly what it is that you, that your concerns in this area, so that when we send over the letter and send over the application, it's all very clear, exactly what we're going to get down to this study.
Gotcha, gotcha. I mean, I was speaking sort of for myself, but does the board, does that reflect the opinion of the board in general?
You have more faith in the government than I do.
I think it's safe to say that the, the speed limit will not be posted above 40, because that, it was a 30 or a 40 in a rural or an urban area, is a generally accepted. I think that we already were told by Chief Marino that the observed average speed was, what, 36?
Based, I believe, something like that, based on their?
When they sat there and just put, so, I mean, it's definitely going to be over 30. And also, further, further caution or just further explanation, these, these, these road studies and analyses and data collection, they are not going to at all take into account that driveway, they are going only before the roadway.
See, that's what I wouldn't understand, is if they were going to require us to post a certain speed, I would expect them to take into account the, the intersections involved.
It's not an intersection, and you're putting the cart before the horse, because the driveway was, was recently approved and permitted. The road has been there for a very long time.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so there's a safe curves program, and the state's going to increase the speed on a curve that has some potential safety issues based on site triangles under the auspices of a safe curve program. I, I don't know, I mean, I think we got to learn more about it, but I hope it can be navigated in a way that something a little more sensible happens.
Let's hope.
Well, and we don't know, you don't know the, until the state comes and says what the speed limit is. We don't, it could go down to 30, it could go up, we don't know.
There are several programs, and there's one, and I don't, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but under the Unified Planning Work Program, there is the ability to, to request MRPC to do short-term targeted projects, and I certainly think that this would, might fall under that. So you might want to call Brad Harris, and I don't know that the board of selectmen need to get involved in that, I would recommend that the board, you know, speak with Brad Harris, and in your correspondence, which I'm sure we would be forwarding to MRPC, or if you want to send it yourself and we sign the form, but the, and obviously copy us, but the, outline that. I mean, Brad Harris and George Snow are the transportation people at MRPC, and I did talk with him specifically about your concerns, because having been at the meetings, I know that this is a hot topic with you guys. So I did say, is there anything you can do in this area? And he said, absolutely. You know, whether we can do a, a small study, whether we just do a traffic count and a vehicle classification, or, you know, but, but outline your request, and then we'll review it and see how we can incorporate it. So, so I would, you know, flush out exactly what it is you want them to look at, and then we can see what MRPC can do.
Could you ask if maybe Brad could come talk to us?
Well, and Brad did mention that they can do technical assistance, something like that, but he definitely encouraged you guys to go forth first with the traffic counts, because you're going to need that base information anyways, before you even move into a study. I can certainly ask if he can have Brad come or?
And we'll put him on 6:30, or, yeah, just so he can come in, but to kind of explain to all the what-ifs Nathan was kind of talking about, if he could shed some light on some of those answers, what it is they look at, the taphography, the amount of vary between buildings, if it's doing 50 feet. I know there's all different things they look at. So if he could come to a meeting and break that down, that might be helpful as well. And we'll start with the?
Okay. All right, I will ask.
All right.
Excuse me, a little bit more on this, same topic.
Sure.
I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Chantal, but the traffic counts are available for three additional roads in town this year?
I can ask.
Okay, I'm not. No, because I had also contacted Brad Harris, and he had directed me to Sherri Bean, who had gotten back to me.
That's good.
And was quite helpful, and very descrip, well, I hadn't received a second email. But my memory, my recollection was that she said that we do, there are, each town has three additional roads that they can apply to have counted for this year.
Okay.
I would suggest that Goodrich Street and Belane be two of those three. Goodrich Street at the intersection of Lancaster Ave, and Belane between Flat Hill and 2A.
And what I was going to say to add to that, if we want to take two weeks and come back on the 27th, because I guess I really haven't driven around in the thought of, is this really an intersection I would like? Those are three, the two you just said are two great areas, and, and I would support those, but I don't know if, driving around, I've seen, so to give, but the two you, you recommended are great ideas too. But, and then next, we'll come back on the 27th, if anybody else has any others, or we can go with those two. Because right now, as he said, the, I'm looking, yeah, that's a bad, and that's a bad one.
Maybe Mr. Agarikins or Chief Marino would have?
Have some feedback as well.
Yeah.
Yes, Paula.
I don't know procedurally how this is typically done. I think it's within input from the, the police department and the DPW director. So, you know, just, I don't know what's on their radar, so we certainly would need to, to check that as well.
Yeah. All right. Are we all done with that? Anything else on that? All right, moving right along, we have White Woods. Is there anything in our little green bucket on White Woods?
Take a look here. This says no report.
All right, Emerald Place, no report. 651 Chase Road, solar.
They sent us a construction progress update.
They sent us the weekly update. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chase Road, all electrical work complete except the unitile work, fence completed this week, except at Chase Road entrance, site cleanup and started by site contractor, tree planting to begin next week for following week. Pleasant Street, all electrical work completed, except unitile, site cleanup started, began installation of berms for plantings, tree plantings to begin next week or the following week. Thank you, Eric. And I just want to make sure I don't have anything else in this packet for that. Any questions on those two?
I do have a question on that one.
Yes.
The 651 Chase Solar, I've spoken with some residents who live on, I believe it's West Townsend Harbor Road, is that the one that the woods is between that?
West Townsend Road.
Off of Chase?
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, that, that site is over 100 acres of solar panels, I believe? Anyways.
I don't know if the town?
When, when we're considering the, the view from someone's home, looking at a telephone pole, and we compare that to their previous view, looking at some thick woods, which is now very thin, and they can see, how do you describe it, described it, 100, hundreds of feet in, in width. His entire view of his backyard is, is now very thinly spotted with some of the woods that are left, and then very plainly sees individual panels for, it's, 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 anyways, that brought me to my question on the trees. Are those screening trees, the plantings? Are those?
They're all different, they're ever, they were doing avarites, there was, there was a whole landscape, rhododendrons, they were doing, what other tall plants? Because it doesn't say on, on the readout what the plants were. But I know there was a lot of?
You have to go back and look, they had a landscaping plan.
You had to go back to your?
Yeah, I know, there was avarites, because I talked about, we talked about it on the Pleasant Street one.
And there's a, there's a landscaping plan, and there's a phase-in period for some of the, some of the elements of the plan, you know, like some of the trees are going to, at certain locations in the buffers area may take years, a few years, some years to mature. I don't remember if that was Pleasant Street or Chase or both, but if, you could probably, if you get, get access to the plans that were approved, and they would contain the landscaping.
And, and we can. And I, I believe, in dealing with the, the company that we dealt with two weeks ago, if there's any resident that does have a screening issue and can see, I'm sure they would do, you know, anything they can to plant more plantings to prevent that.
Are those residents going to need to come before the board for that to be acted upon, or is there a contact that they can make?
Yes, they could, they could come in front of us, absolutely, and say that the plantings are now going up, I still have a big spot. We can look at that, just like we did with Pleasant Street. Or he can, if, like Celeste and Ryan, the, the people that were here, they are now working with Eric individually on plantings and where, how close to their wall the plantings are going. So he could, they could do either one. But, no, go ahead.
Chase Road is not New Gen though, it's a different company, isn't it?
I thought they were both.
Are they both?
Yeah, because we get the report from the same, I believe they're the same company, because we read the report from the same New Gen, yes.
Yeah, I don't know, my understanding is that there may be situations where residents from like their second-story window or so, I don't think that they're guaranteed to not see any panels, but, you know, I think what was submitted was, I think, you know, certainly doesn't hurt to talk to them, and, and certainly, you know, hold them to whatever was in the landscaping plan. But I, I mean, as you said, it is a huge area, I don't know that it was possible to completely block all sight lines, and that really, I don't think that was in the conditions to completely, you know, was to do as best as reasonably possible.
I agree, and that, that was always what it was, we will do the best we can. And if there is, and they always said, if there is a resident that does have an issue and is, is staring at solar panels, they absolutely would want to work with that person. They've always said that, that they would do what they need to do to make sure the rev is, that they're all good neighbors. So. they're all good neighbors. So...
I would just point out one, one fact. The, the by, the solar bylaw says a 200-foot buffer strip or 200-foot setback?
Buffer, okay.
Yeah, no, go ahead, sir.
No, that's all right.
It is buffer strip?
We'll say it together. One, two, three.
Buffer strip.
Buffer strips, yeah.
Nice.
And actually, there's a fairly significant, in, in the solar bylaw, there's actually a significant text devoted to defining what a buffer strip is.
And it's just a 200-foot strip of open, clear-cut land?
No, it's, it's defined as a 200-foot strip area primarily dedicated towards screening, I believe.
Interesting. Thank you.
I was going to see if you had the book.
I did.
All right. Weekly update board. White Tail Crossing, the, at town meeting, it was passed, it was passed by. The article was not passed, the article was passed by. They're hoping to come to the November, or fall, I shouldn't say November, the fall town meeting Is this the updated?
I hope so.
I hope so. Yeah, amended through May 2012, so it should be, it should have been amended for this. Okay. Matthew. All right, next we have a subdivision. Oh, sorry, were you asking a question?
No, I was just thinking.
The next one is 50 Elmwood Road. They are set for us to sign the findings. We have the findings. The Board of Selectmen, I talked with them at their Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, and they had some things. They were looking to add under the gravel, to do with the gravel permit that they don't have to do because of the subdivision. But they were looking for a couple of other things, so they did send that in an email the next day. You should have all received that. And then we also got, if I can find, I have so many papers here. Yes, that's the one the Selectmen sent us. So, maybe it's in here. Oh, there they are. You have the copies, that's why they're not in my paper.
They weren't, they weren't with that, so here we go.
You're welcome.
Eventually.
That is yours. If we lose that.
Actually, I should get the copies. I just found those for that, too.
Oh, so we all have copies of those? Perfect.
I just didn't find them.
That's all right.
Here's Toby's copy.
Stuff gets hidden in that bucket all the time, don't you worry. Yes, that's, but, that's not right.
Okay.
Right?
That was, I forgot about that.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so on page two of this document, which is on the top, it says inbox Elmwood subdivision from the Jesse Johnson, the second page. It lists what the Board of Selectmen were looking for. So then we went, because some of them we already have in here. So number one was fencing for public safety and screening on unsightly operation. So Jamie Rowe, our design engineer, sent a sheet that says fencing, number one, fencing for public safety and screening of unsightly operation. The applicant shall install temporary construction fencing along Elmwood Road. Also, the site evacuation will be from south to north, back to front, in order to keep a natural buffer this, during this process. So that has, I believe, been added to Yes, number eight. And number eight on the directives that we added for that is the applicant shall install temporary construction fencing along Elmwood Road, just as exactly they said, site excavation shall be from south to north, back to front, in order to keep a natural buffer during the process. So that one's all set. The next we had, method of removal, method of removal. The construction sequence is as follows. Tree removal, stump removal, strip and stockpile the loom for reuse on site. Load and haul excess materials off-site. Prepare subgrading to the proposed grades on the plant and stabilize the disturbed areas with loom and seed. And that's number nine. Then we have hours of operation, hours of operation that were already in our directives, referring to number six. The applicant shall limit construction work hours to 7:00 a.m. through 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. So that's in there. Routes of transportation to remove period materials is directive number three. The applicant shall utilize Route 2A for truck removal of overburden. Number five, control of drainage. Refer to the definitive subdivision plan sheet number eight. Now, do we have...
The gentleman in the audience has the plans.
Come on up. What's his name? Will?
It's, uh, go with that.
How are you?
Good evening. Just for the record, Wesley Fliss, Whitman Bingham Associates.
Wesley. I said Will.
Just for the clarification, I know you guys are going through this, but the last set of plans, I believe they were revised at the end of February, February 24, 2014, should be the last set of plans that you have as part of the review process. And so as part of the set of plans, we do have, you know, I think there's 10, actually looking at this, 11 sheets in the set of plans. And so that item that Selectmen brought up is taken care of on sheet number eight, which should be in the set of plans that I believe the Planning Office has. And so that's why we just put that comment in there.
Okay.
And I don't know necessarily that needs to be a directive necessarily, it's just as part of the, the package of plans. And I believe in the directives, you, again, directive number one calls for and references the site plan that I'm talking about with that certain date. And so that item is taken care of within directive number one, really.
Okay. And then also on the subdivision was the control of dust.
Yes, and again, it goes back to sheet number eight again.
Sheet number eight again.
Yes, and that's what we talk about. A lot of times what we do is, for a site like this would be watering.
Well, that, that was the question.
Watering of the dust, typically the, the standard practice. Sometimes you can get into chemicals, but we don't really want to get into chemicals on a site like this. It's really not big enough to, to get in anything more than just watering the site down. And hopefully, if, like I said, if it, if it needs chemicals, they'll get into the chemical. If they need the loam and seed, there's portions of it they will have to. But the applicant doesn't see the site being open that long, that dust should be more of an issue that can't be controlled by water, so.
Well, because we talk about the amount that, that is leaving, so ballpark for me, what, what, how long are we looking at?
Probably a year. Just, just so you, a year is what Mr. Crowley said, so, just so everybody can hear it at home.
All right. Disposing of waste materials, intent to the operation. Thank you. Number seven, number seven, stumps to be grounded into wood chips for reuse. Any demolition materials to be hauled and legally disposed of at a licensed disposed facility. So that's taken care of. And performance bond, performance bond is number seven in our directives that state the applicant shall specify in writing before construction a plan for a performance guarantee. Such guarantee shall be acceptable to the planning board by vote. So that one's covered. So all of those that were sent by the Board of Selectmen are on the plan and covered for. And then we added the ones that were not, which were, seven, I believe, was already there. We added eight and nine. So does anybody have any questions on this?
A question on the disposition of waste material, where they talk about stumps being ground. Is there anywhere in our, in our references, or is that only from the Whitman-Bingham letter? Is that on the plans?
It's in directives number 10, 10A.
The applicant shall dispose of waste materials and since the operation is follows, stump to be grounded into wood chips for reuse. And B, any demolition material to be hauled and legally disposed of at a licensed disposal facility.
Excellent. Excellent, thank you.
And then number 11, the applicant shall adhere to the Lunenburg Planning Board monitoring and construction processes attached. And number 12, the applicant shall adhere to the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions issued March 5, 2014. So those are the directives. Any other questions?
I, I guess I'll, I'll be curious to, to learn more about the, the bonding proposed by the applicant and have that discussion about what, what we're looking for there. But that's about, I don't see any point in discussing that.
Right, until they start construction?
Well, no, until, they're going to propose something. I, I guess, when are they going to propose that?
That's, they usually do that once they start construction. That's not something we do now.
That's not now?
No, that's when they start construction with Mike Savage-O and everything. We'll sit down, they'll go through all of that. Any other questions on the directives and findings?
I don't have anything.
Matthew, are you thinking or?
No.
Oh, oh, okay. I saw you shaking forward, so I didn't know if you were thinking or if you were...
Not coming. Thank you.
All right, so we do have here the findings and directives. We've already approved the plan. The plan's been approved.
Yep.
The directives were set to be signed, but then the applicant had asked us to hold off, so they are now ready to be signed. And the directives have encompassed all of the earth removal requirements requested from us and the Board of Selectmen, because we already had three of them on there. So they're all here, ready to sign. So I would accept a motion to assign, to sign.
Question from the public.
Oh, yeah. Do you have a question?
Is it okay to come up?
You come up, I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Carl, luck 50 Sunset Lane. I have a question on the waivers, and I know they've been approved, but I can't seem to find the compliance with the guideline for granting waivers specifically regarding the sidewalks.
Can you repeat that, Carl? I didn't follow the question.
Trying to track down the waiver, because the waiver on the sidewalks, what was approved is that the waiver request for installation of sidewalks was due to the fact that the subdivision has less than 10 lots. I don't believe that's reason for a waiver. And I, and I've requested the justification for waiver, which is required by your guidelines, and I cannot get a justification for the waiver. It's supposed to be, according to the guidelines, the applicant shall have requested the waiver and shall have demonstrated in writing why the requested waiver is in the, is in the public interest. And I can't find that writing anywhere.
Go ahead.
So I don't, you know, I don't know where the rationale would have been recorded. Carl, I can tell you what the, what I recall the nature of the conversation was. First of all, it's a fairly common waiver. I agree with you that it's one we want to be fairly judicious about. I think in addition to being a relatively small subdivision at nine units, it's a subdivision on a dead-end street in what's likely to be a not heavily traffic, you know, foot traffic or bike traffic part of town. As far as residents, you know, most of the traffic would be residents either moving within their own subdivision or leaving their subdivision. And so it seemed like a reasonable waiver to grant for such a subdivision.
So I, I tend to agree with some of those, although we want a walkable town, and we have requirements for wa, for sidewalks to try to get there. And if we keep waiving, we'll never have them. And who, who's most important for sidewalks is the children, so they can safely get to the bus and so forth. But, but all that aside, what I'm, my question is not the argument of whether or not to waive it. The, my question is the process, that the process is supposed to be that the applicant provides in writing justification why the waiver is in the best public interest. And that's what I'm looking for.
So, yeah, it may have been that, that process wasn't followed here. My guess is you probably thought...
No, it was followed here. Anthony, Wesley, can you come up here? What was the, what's Anthony's last name?
Cleves.
Anthony Cleves, thank you.
Sir.
I can't tell you what meeting, what date the meeting was. Anthony came with the waiver list and had reasons why he was...
Correct. And it, and it falls along to what Nathan was getting to, is because of the size of the subdivision, typically we ask for the waiver for this type of item, being just to case the sidewalk, because it doesn't produce enough pedestrian traffic, really. And again, it's a dead-end street, pedestrian traffic on a dead-end street with nine lots doesn't produce enough traffic for the use of a sidewalk necessarily. And I think it's, if you look at subdivision rules and regulations, there's a list of waivers in the back of the subdivision rules and regulations.
By the state.
That are typically waived for subdivisions of 10 or less, for reasons that aren't even necessarily talked about at our meetings now at public hearings, because from input from the Planning Board and even, I think, from the DPW, a lot of times DPWs don't like to see new sidewalks where they're not going to be used, and they have to maintain them over the years.
Right, they have to maintain them. We don't have the...
And so we have to, you know, we ask for the waiver.
The ability to do that.
We give the reason at that time, as we see nine homes, we don't see the pedestrian traffic for it.
So again, I'm, I'm looking for the process that, that the board follows, because in a prior public comment, I was directed that we'd have control over waivers and directed to the guideline, which I received. And the guideline clearly says in writing to justify how it's in the public's best interest. And I can't find anything in writing, even what was just said, that identifies how it's in the public's best interest to get this waiver. I do say, and, and I, and I acknowledge that in the, in the waiver guidelines, it speaks about sidewalks, and it does say that they may be omitted. It also says required if 10 or less, but I think that's probably an area you might want to look at. But it doesn't say they're automatically wavered for 10 or less. So where is the justification for the guideline that demonstrates it's in the public's interest for that waiver?
So let me make sure I understand, Carl. So in this case, you are reasonably content with a decision made by the Planning Board?
I didn't see that.
The explanation, okay, so do you object to the decision made by the Planning Board?
I, I object to a decision that doesn't follow process.
Well, do you acknowledge that if the conversation occurred that I described, that the substance of what you were looking to have documented was considered, or you, because...
I haven't heard anyone mention public interest.
Well, we didn't use the word public interest, but I think when we talk about safety, number of people using the street, I think that those are all, that's, that, that all goes to public interest. A cost of maintenance that goes to public interest. I mean, much of this goes to public interest.
Okay, so I, I just didn't know if I missed it. So the guideline was not followed. There is nothing in writing.
There is, no, there is something in writing.
I think I have everything in writing that the planning...
The original waiver request just says, please waive this. It doesn't...
Yeah. All I have is your finding, which says approved waiver requested from installation of sidewalks due to the fact, due to the fact, and the, the fact in your write-up of the waiver, the justification for the waiver in the write-up is that the subdivision has less than 10 units.
Yeah, and there's probably a basis for typically waiving such things for subdivisions less than 10 units due to public cost of maintenance versus benefit based on scale of subdivision.
So, and maybe, because that's the first, the, the cost to the public is the first I've heard of that anywhere. So maybe if that was properly documented, the process would have been followed and all would be good, and I wouldn't have to ask the question.
Okay. Well, I, I, yeah, apologize that perhaps... Well, I, yeah, apologize that perhaps the process wasn't followed to the letter of capturing every thought there. I do, you know, as a member of the planning board who was involved in the process, I would say we gave careful consideration to the public interest involved in making that decision. There were areas where we did not make, we did not make all the waivers requested very specifically for public interest reasons. Example, it was requested to waive the, I believe, the tree, trees lining the streets. We were very specific about not waiving that. We put in very specific requirements regarding maintaining trees lining the streets. So I, you know, I would, I hope you're not suggesting that we took our responsibilities lightly regarding dealing with these waivers, although point taken that perhaps we did not meet the highest standards of documentation for the small subdivision.
Okay. So I would just encourage you going forward to maybe try to get better documentation of the justifications for the waivers from the applicants, so the public is well aware of the story behind the waiver.
Got you. No, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to follow up on that. I'm glad that, I'm glad that was brought up, but also the waiver, the dead-end length of maximum six hundred feet was also waived. We gave them the seven hundred and fifty. Was that also because it was common for less than ten lots?
There were multiple reasons for that. We did not make that decision lightly. We made that decision over the course of three meetings, I believe, and waited twice for feedback from the Conservation Committee.
Actually had the Conservation Committee come to the meeting and speak to it twice.
It was a, it was used, that issue was considered in the context of other topics related to how the site was being proposed to be developed. It wa, and the decision was arrived that, I think, certainly by a majority of the Board, if not consensus, based on the relative, you know, merits of the landowners' rights and supporting them, and, you know, the thing, the extra steps that they were doing that they didn't necessarily have to do, versus, you know, the benefit of shortening it. And I don't think we ultimately found a lot of good reasons to not waive it. And there were certainly reasons for, that made it valuable for the developer to have us waive it. And so, I mean, I think it would be hard to argue we did not give that careful consideration.
No, I don't disagree. And I was part of the deliberations as well, I do recall. Although unfortunately, the write-up that Mr. Luck was referring to does say that subdivisions one to five units may exceed the six hundred, but they have a six to ten that says, that does not say that. So it's just FYI. I just wanted to follow up. It was a very good comment, I think.
We did this in consultation with our peer review engineer, who we hire to be even more aware of our, even have a deeper understanding of our bylaws that we as volunteer members do. And I don't believe, I believe the waiver request was presented to us by our own peer reviewing engineer, something out of our discretion, and within our discretion, I guess, so.
I'm good. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Damon, anything?
No.
Okay. So back to the findings and directives. Again, the plan was already assigned, was already approved and signed. These are the directives following up. We did, the issue that was outstanding was the gravel permit. We met, we added ours, and then the Board of Selectmen had a couple, so we added theirs as well. So I would accept a motion to accept the findings and directives for fifty Elmwood Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And we have to sign them, and Damon, as the clerk, you have to sign as the clerk as well.
Twice, yep.
All right, so, let's see, what is our next topic? I'm sorry, let me have to go through that. The next is forty Lemonster Shirley Road. Talk to us about Shirley Lemonster Road.
I think that it's, I do believe, the tower, there's a possible cell tower going to be going in. I think it's on the Lemonster-Lunenburg line, and they're requesting the town to offer up comment on any historic properties that would be located near the site that they're going to propose it. And then they sent over some plans for you guys to review.
Okay.
And I think some documentation here as well.
All right. Because I think the land here, just for visual for everybody, is when you go to the end of Lancaster, Lancaster Street right here, at the end of that, right before Powell's is, Padula Brothers, that corner, that land in front of you, is that, that is all the land. There's thirty, I believe thirty acres of land there that is owned, and they're looking, privately owned, and they're looking to have the cell tower put there.
Right.
So just visually, so you know where it is. It's right there on that Lemonster-Lunenburg line.
I'm very happy you're telling people where it is, because I don't know exactly.
Nothing in Lunenburg. So that is private property that faces you there, and they're looking to put in a cell tower. So do you want to open the plan?
Sure.
Do we need to look?
I will do that.
You're all set?
All set?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Peter. You're all set. Mr. Crowley, you're all set. What'll happen is we're signing these this evening, and then Marjorie will bring them to the clerks, and they'll file them with the Registry of Deeds.
Thank you very much.
Happy building. Good luck.
Thank you for having me.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you for being so patient.
Are these the plans? They were just with forty.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, this was with forty.
Yeah, this is Elmwood.
Sorry. They were with the wrong section.
She probably just kept them there in case we needed to record them.
Yeah, I didn't realize it. Let me find what you were saying.
I got the cell plans here if you want them.
Yeah, here they are.
Here they are.
Here in here. Okay. Here, they're cells. And I will look and see if there's a bunch more.
Do you see them? I don't see them, something like that.
No, we're not finding it right now.
It looks like about seven hundred and fifty feet off the road. Which in football terms is about two and a half.
Any luck? No luck. She must have forgot to put them in there. You guys can look at my copy.
Well, no, I think they have individually in there.
Oh, do they? Okay.
Yeah, so they are looking at it.
Oh, good, good. Awesome.
I looked at them already.
Okay. Yeah.
It's at elevation one sixty-five.
So, and they're not coming in front of us with the plan. This is just a suggestion. This is just giving us an informal, this is what we're looking to do.
Right.
Just so we have clarity. We're not today voting on putting up a cell tower there. This was more of a...
Informational.
Informational. Town resource management working on behalf of AT&amp;T has requested procedure to obtain official abutters list. No application has yet been received. So this is just what they're thinking of doing.
Were they asking for historic implications, too? Is that part of it?
I think so.
She Intel hits at something about the historical.
They're looking for possible historic properties that would be affected by the tower.
In that area?
I think so. And I don't know the area, so...
Do you want to forward it to the Historic Commission? Or do you want to make, us to make that determination, or?
Historic Commission?
Historic.
Historical Commission.
No, no. No.
Yeah.
I feel like we just knocked down the historic building over there, but...
You did, Powell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not going to make a decision for the Historic Commission myself.
Can we forward that over? And you guys could take a look at it in the next meeting?
Yeah, if you can have Marjorie send it to Becky Landry, that'd be good.
Sure. Becky Landry. Okay. Perfect. Here's the first section we need to sign.
Okay, thank you. Are they, just, do they contact Lemonster, too, in this situation?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, because it's in Lunenburg, so I don't know. Lemonster, if Lemonster butts it, the abut in Lemonster would get notification.
Yeah.
I don't know if the city of Lemonster gets notification. We could check.
I don't know, I just, it's Lemonster, but I feel like they have more historic buildings down there than we do. Couple farms over there, but I was just curious.
All right. So that was the village district bylaw board discussion.
Oh, yeah.
What have we got going on with our village?
Oh, wait, and I'm looking back on my notes. Marjorie also printed out the survey, and I'm going through that right now, to try to get a sense of what was said.
What were our final numbers on that, She Intel?
I'm not sure, let me grab, I have the survey here. See, she printed it out for me, so.
We're getting, oh, I'm sorry.
Audio.
Audio issues.
We're getting the audio. Talk louder.
Oh, it's me.
Oh, hey.
Sorry.
They can't hear you.
Sorry.
No one's ever told me to talk louder.
Yeah. I get it all the time. So there were over two hundred and sixty-one respondents to the total survey, it looks like.
Nice. And what were the questions, just for the people at home that didn't answer, because there were two hundred and sixty-one back?
There were a bunch of questions. I think in particular, what I'm looking at is what buildings or sites in Lunenburg do you believe are worthy of historic preservation efforts? So I will look at that.
Because this is also going to help us...
It's all, you know, it's all verbal, so it's not as clear as getting...
Sign it after you.
Okay, we're ten questions, and these are the answers.
Right, and they're all narrative, so it's really, it's a matter of going through it all and getting a sense of what the majority is looking for.
And this is part of our master planning as well?
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
So I'm going through that right now.
Go ahead, Damon.
Yeah. I had been thinking about this for a while, but I brought it up at the Building Use Committee meeting last week, and got some positive feedback, so I put it on paper and brought it to the Historic Commission, and they were in favor of it, too, but I'll just, I'll read it off, but I wrote this down and presented it at the Historic Commission meeting. But because I think community outreach is going to be such a huge part of what we're doing here with the village district.
Yeah, I brought mine.
That it's, it's critical that we get the town involved as much as possible. So what I'm proposing is that we do a visioning session, to basically partner with the Historic Commission and the Planning Board and the Building Use Committee to hold a visioning session with the goal of reaching a common understanding of the history of the Lunenburg Town Center to provide a solid foundation moving forward in the writing of the village district. The intent of the exercise that I'm proposing would be not to discuss the future of the Town Center, but first to discuss its past, so that we can better understand who we are as a community moving forward. Basically, what I'm thinking is to do a slideshow with, slideshow presentation of images researched with help from the Historic Society, as well as do a little survey of all the different businesses and entities that added life to the Town Center over its history, and hope to paint a picture of what our Town Center was and what it can be again. The Historic Commission has offered to put this presentation together and organize it, and we went over the feasibility of it, and we think we can get it going by the middle of June. So that would hopefully move our timeline along. I've been in contact with Jim Larkin at this Historic Society, and he's available to help put that presentation together, too, because they are the repository for most of the information regarding the history of the town. And I think if we have an event like this, a visioning session, we can, as a planning board, learn from that and help it to inform us, and we talk about setbacks, building square footage, maximum site coverage, you know, design standards, signage restrictions, and what kind of historic covenants would be important for our buildings. But the goal here is really to, again, form a foundation that we can start off on. And so I think this would be a good way to start, because we've been kind of dormant on the topic, because we've been pressed into other things, such as the marijuana bylaw and stuff like that, but I think this would be a good way to refocus our efforts. And if, moving forward tonight, if we want to talk about and reaffirm the purposes and intents portion of a bylaw, because I think that's also important to get done first before we start picking at different areas of it. All of our other different districts bylaws have, first, when you flip them, intents and purposes, to make sure that when you talk about the letter of the law and the intent of the law, you know, you have a clear understanding moving forward.
What the intent was.
What the intent was, yeah.
Sure.
So does this visioning session...
I'm certainly open to it. I think we've done things similar like that before. It's just, you've got to really make sure you get your questions to the public sorted out, so you can really get those answers clearly. I have a really good presentation that I could kind of follow on and, you know, kind of kick to you guys to, and if we're going, if you're doing like a slideshow anyways, this kind of gives folks a visualization as to, okay, what type of development looks good to you.
Yeah, and I understand that part, but I want to do kind of a series of these. This one, I just want to talk about the past, and then we can take that information and put that with that presentation that you're talking about.
Okay, so you were not, okay.
Because I want to start out neutral and just build that base of, that foundation, solid, common understanding of where we've come from, so we can move forward.
What's the timeline, do you think? You're going to do your first meeting in June?
In June, and I think if we can take that information in and put another slide or presentation together, maybe a month, month and a half after that.
Are we doing it as a planning board, or are you doing it on reuse?
The Historic Commission will do the first one, because it's purely historical.
Okay.
And then I think we, as a planning board, take that information, build and prepare to do our first, or follow-up after that, and then we can talk about moving forward.
Okay. So do you want to do that at the same meeting, at six we're going to do?
I think it's a different meeting.
Okay. Because I think it'll be hard to get people to go to multiple series, so, because you just want people to come and participate.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I'm also, I forgot to mention, but I want people to bring their own images, too, if they have some, and...
Pictures.
Pictures, stories, to, one, and we should be, have a scanner accessible, too, so we can document those and build up the Historic Society's collection.
That'll be nice.
But I really...
I have beautiful ones of Lake Shirley.
Because I really think that this is going to be a debated issue in town, and it's important to have, get a bylaw together that the town is in agreement with. And I think we have a nice, neutral meeting, and I don't want to have it clouded by, oh, don't do this, don't do that, I just want to, so we can have that common understanding, is what I'm talking about, before we move forward and then talk about what we think should be.
You just want to open the door to the subject.
Yeah.
And while we're talking here, this is just, I've had this question, and I don't know if you can help me. Everything I read on center reuses and creating a downtown center is very hard now because of the malls. And people want to go into a mall, there's better parking, there's, you have more people because there's twenty stores versus two. And they say you need to try and have a residential type of elderly housing that's walkable, because they, during the day, frequent these establishments, so they have that little business coming in. On top of when people get out of work, they go. But during the day, those people will be out walking, going to the, and I say these people, that wasn't nice, the elderly would be walking to the post office, to, you know, the cafe that we have now. So, and we've been working with the federal, and I think the Selectmen, if I'm wrong, have given them a six-month kind of leeway, okay, we're giving you another six months, but you've got to kind of come up with...
They're coming back tomorrow night.
Okay.
Tomorrow night, I have a next meeting, but they're coming back within the next couple weeks.
If that does not work, can we proactively, as a community, as a town, say we have this building? We're looking for...
You could do a request for a proposal for, you know...
You know, financial backing from three people that want to create this senior center, and, you know, we'll work with them.
Senior housing.
Senior housing and do expedient permitting. And they say you need to try and have a residential type of elderly housing that's walkable, because they, during the day, frequent these establishments, so they have that little business coming in. On top of when people get out of work, they go. But during the day, those people will be out walking, going to the... and I say these people, that wasn't nice. The elderly would be walking to the post office, to, you know, the cafe that we have now. So, and we've been working with the federal, and I think the Selectment, if I'm wrong, have given them a six-month kind of leeway. Okay, we're giving you another six months, but you've got to kind of come up with...
They're coming back tomorrow night.
Okay.
Tomorrow night, I have a next meeting, but they're coming back within the next couple weeks.
If that does not work, can we proactively, as a community, as a town, say, we have this building, we're looking for...
You could do a request for a proposal for, you know...
You know, financial backing from three people that want to create this senior center, and, you know, we'll work with them. Senior housing and do expedient permitting.
43D permitting.
Right, so is there like a packet we can do that? We would put out two people that they financially will bankroll it out of their own.
That is... that would go... that's the kind of thing the Building Reuse Committee is talking about doing, and if it does land in our lap, then that's what we'll do.
Which would be great.
Right, but that's where I think we, as a planning board, we need to proactively, like I was since 2006 on the mobile gas station, that that's going to be a gas station. Nobody's going to buy industrial. It's the same thing. We've got to start doing it. We've got to start saying and identifying, okay, that building, if in six... Tuesday, they come in front of us and say, all right, Plan B is, let's put it out to bid, let's see if there's three gentlemen, three corporations that want to bankroll it, put it together, and...
Yep, and I think that Bill... I think we're totally on board. We've talked about this before. I think that... I mean, I'd make a motion to support what you're saying, and I'd also agree with what he's... I think the Building Reuse Committee's configured, like their head is in that mode right now to do those kind of things.
But as planning, I think they need to work, as Damon said, for zoning, because we have to zone it right, so they can do that.
Absolutely.
If we don't have Trudy Streets zoned right, well, Trudy Streets isn't going to be there anymore. So that's what we have to make sure, that we're doing everything we can zoning-wise to get them...
Absolutely, which is what we've got to do with them anyways on all the other properties. So I just... I'm totally on board with you. I think we should leverage that vehicle that we got in these, you know, hardworking people.
So, yeah. Do I have your blessing in report with the Historic Commission doing the first meeting?
Ah, so Historic Commission, just a comment on that. So I think it's a great idea. I love the idea of having some really neutral topic, where it's just discuss our understanding of the past, share our understanding of the past. I would propose that while that's... so while that's being prepared, we continue in our meetings like today, for example, to move forward with the other things that we need to talk to about the village. We can incorporate any kind of feedback, anything we learned from this session then, but I think we still have other preparation around Village District that we... I don't think we want to wait till mid-June. I think we want to talk about it tonight, talk about it.
Mid-June's going to be here pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I just don't want to taint the discussion, because they're going to be, oh, I heard this on the planning board, and I just...
No, I don't think it's a question of tainting the discussion. For example, I would like to lay out and understand... I think we need... this is a great kickoff for the public engagement, but by the same token, we, I think as a planning board, we need to be prepared post-this to present the public with some structure for the future public engagements.
The whole intent of the exercise is for us to learn from it too. I don't want to go too far without...
I don't... I think the danger of us going too far, given how long we've had this on our plate, is minimal.
There's things we can do, like I mentioned, the intents and purposes, that's the topic that's not going to affect that meeting, and probably something we should have hammered out to bring to that meeting, so...
I don't think we want... I like your idea of keeping that meeting real neutral. And I'm... when I say I want to prepare for other things, it doesn't mean I want to set things in concrete, so when we come out of this, we already have canned answers. I want to learn from this, like you're saying, but I think there's a lot we can do to explore the subject matter, like with marijuana. The marijuana bylaw, we had a lot of background to lay down before we went in that meeting. There's a lot of discussions, you know, for this meeting, we were emailed, I think something Marion put together in December around Village bylaw, based on our conversation.
That was my presentation that I did back in December.
That she did, yeah, that they did back to us in December.
December, okay. So, I mean, I would like to keep discussing things like that, not with the purpose of locking down the village concept, like into one thing, but just to make some progress so that when we get to the next public engagement, we're ready to do that one. Again, purpose is not to block out the input, it's just two tracks going forward kind of thing.
Yeah, I support... I don't... I'm not saying we should not do anything, but I just, like I said, kind of the neutral points or the moving forward points is what I would like to work on. It's not that far off.
Right, I'm with you.
Okay, well, if we get to a part, I mean, when we start discussing things and you think we should hold off, let us know, but otherwise, I'd like to keep some of this Village District stuff on the agenda. I mean, you yourself have been pressuring us to try to figure out some zoning things for the reuse stuff.
Where would you like to start, if not intent and purpose?
Well, I guess, since we have this Village District on our agenda today.
Yes.
I'd like to talk definitely about, start... I mean, just have a conversation around what we're going to do, you know, about reuse. Could be minimal steps, or it could be full, you know, the zoning for the reuse stuff. So for example, the buildings you mentioned, I guess the Passios is real, real big. You've been talking to us for a while, how we're almost like a bottleneck right now in the process, because we don't have any kind of... anything in place there.
Have you... have we... I'm sorry, Nathan. The Building Reuse Committee did a presentation, there's a, you know, big packet. Did you all go through that? Because I'm thinking we might want to even have that, because they've made recommendations.
Because they... and they're ready to have a joint meeting too, whenever we're ready to do it.
Okay, because I... we... you know, why don't we schedule that, so they can kind of say, okay, for TC Passios, this is what we envisioned. For the Town Hall, this is what we envisioned, because I think they already have some types of visionary ideas for each building.
Well, that's great. So when can we get that on the... when is the...
Who... is it Mr. Toll, Jamie Toll?
Jamie's our...
That Marjorie would reach out to, to try to get a workshop?
Yeah, we... our next meeting wouldn't be to the beginning of June. For that one, we'd have to... unless he wants to coordinate something and just... Jamie's fully qualified to do the presentation, just whether or not they want to talk about it.
That's up to you guys, but if we have a joint workshop, then you, as the Building Reuse team, can figure out who... but we can kind of start to say, and we understand what buildings, and then work zoning-wise, where are those buildings at, and what do we need to do to fix that?
Yeah, because we did a lot of analysis into the current state of the buildings, how hard are the accessibility challenges to get over, what needs to be done to repurpose that building, why it's not a good idea to move Town Hall over to the Ritter Building, and it's better to be here, things of that nature. We flushed all that out in our meeting, so it'd be good... yeah, it'd be good to have a joint meeting, definitely.
And it doesn't have to be on your meeting night or our meeting night, because we have so much stuff we can just do, you know, to our workshop, sitting at this table.
Yeah.
So if Marjorie...
Reaching out to Jamie would be the right step in that direction.
And schedule, so if Marjorie can schedule that with Jamie, and then we can start to be educated to that, and then we need to look at what steps we need to do to rezone whatever buildings need to be rezoned properly.
Yeah, and we want to do that as quickly as possible.
Exactly.
Could you get that, the document that you guys were talking about electronically distributed to the board, because I don't know that I've seen that. Yeah, just electronic, it's fine.
Yeah, I will get that to you. Absolutely happy to.
I think you could also go back and watch Jamie's presentation to the Selectment too.
But I don't think that was as in-depth as your packet is. Like when I started going through this packet, it was very...
When was that presentation?
It was the beginning of January, I think.
And so it's from a decision-making standpoint, the reuse committee is still pretty much in the same place as they were at that presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. If you could have Marjorie dig that out and send us the...
I will.
That would be awesome.
Absolutely.
The video.
Yep, I have it right on my dining room table. All right, are we all set with the village, or are you still going?
I'd like to talk... oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do we have time to talk about the intent and purpose tonight, or do you want to...
Yeah, it's on our agenda. And Shantel's the one that created it and presented it, so she'll be able to answer any of your questions, well...
Or you could refresh my memory.
Yeah, I just cooked... when I put together that sheet that I handed you, I took a... just a little bit of language from the demolition delay bylaw. So I did it from a historic standpoint, is what I wrote, but I also looked back to the state model bylaw that MRPC gave us way back, and they have five bullet points of their own that they suggest. And I think... I mean, I can just read through if you want. I think they would be a good starting point.
Sure.
Because the one that we got on the first model bylaw is, I mean, it's good, but it's... I want it to be direct and very clear, so when we're up there at town meeting or whatever, on the floor, presenting this to a bunch of people, we can say, this, this, and this is why this is important, and what we're trying to do here. So I think... so if we just... I'll just read these off.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So this is from the state template. "The purposes of the Village Center over a district are to, number one, build upon the historic development patterns in existing village centers to create attractive, walkable neighborhoods. B, encourage adaptive reuse of abandoned vacant or underutilized buildings or structures where appropriate," and that, I think that definitely applies to us. "C, allow for a mix of new land uses that are appropriate to both the needs of the community and the scale of the surrounding neighborhoods."
That's us.
Which is good, yeah. This one I don't think is so much us, but "provide incentives to develop larger parcels at a higher density and incoordinated planned approach." I'm not sure we have too many larger parcels that we want developed in the center of town. Passios, kind of, but that's more of a reuse than a...
And the primary might fall into that category to some extent.
I just wouldn't say that is one of our main priorities here, to be putting on the intent and purpose of the...
I don't... yeah, I mean, I think to Joanna's point earlier, though, if you really want to generate meaningful, you know, retail, commercial-type retail activity, there's got to be enough people to support that activity. So, I mean, I don't... maybe it's not the top number one thing, but I think, you know, certainly, when I talk here about putting senior living in the primary, I think, yeah, that's going to increase the density in a useful and beneficial way.
I just... my only thought on that is, I hope that, I don't know, but as far as the profit margin for a developer doing that, the profit margins are different when it comes to senior living, or apartments, or office condos in there, would be, I think, the highest profit margin for a developer. So before, the developer's proposal relied on HUD funding to make it work, which there was no HUD funding for it, so I just caution to rely so heavily on the fact that senior living is going to work there without some kind of outside funding. So, I don't... I just keep your options open, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand.
And even as far as residential applications there, the profit margins aren't as high as an office building, per se, or some other use, a retail use or something like that.
Yeah, I guess... so I guess, why don't we leave... why don't we look and see what proves to be feasible based on the land area, and then if it turns out it's not really a major element of what we can or want to do, we can drop it as a goal. But right now, it's, yeah.
Then the last one was maintain a constantly high level of design quality throughout the district. And what I had put together on this little thing was, the intent and purpose of the Village District is to protect the historic and aesthetic qualities of the Town Center, while at the same time allow appropriate economic development that will enhance the quality of life for all Lunenburg residents. Is there something that you feel is missed in any of those? Or do you want to go through one by one?
No, no, go ahead.
I got a big mouth.
No, go, go. I'm working on my listening skills.
No, me too.
Nope, go ahead.
All right, so I guess... so that sounds good, Damon. I've been thinking about this recently. I happen to live in Town Center as well, so it's a... I guess, I think there's probably, potentially, a few different, and we'll hopefully, between our deliberations and our engagements with the town, get a better picture of what's most attractive, but there are different potential visions for Town Center, which have different characteristics from each other, and different characteristics from the current state, which might be, each be valid and desirable ways to move forward. Now that said, they might not be equally desirable, right? They each have pros and cons, and we've got to choose. I mean, I guess, so for example... Yeah, so I think some of the stuff that you've got there is probably got to be true to all of them, like preserving the historic character, protecting the historic character. I don't see a vision of Town Center that doesn't protect the historic character, in my personal opinion. You know, maybe we engage with the town, they're like, you know, raise it, you know, disgust me, or whatever, but I don't think that's going to happen. But as far as like, you know, another goal that isn't there is like, you know, emphasis maybe on, I don't know, outdoor activity, for example. I'm just making... like pedestrian and bicycle traffic, you know, you know, more of a... that aspect as opposed to another vision which might be more focused on commercial development. Of course, you could say, well, you could have both, right? But one might leave it with more of a residential educational character, and one might... another vision might move it a little more in a commercial direction. And both might protect the historic character and, you know, involve, you know...
So are you looking for more walkability or more passive recreation?
I guess what I'm saying is, let's say we had something that was walkability and passive recreation, right, involving sidewalks and bike lanes and, you know, better accessibility to Marshall Park and Marshall Pond and whatever, you know? You know, better walking lanes on Oak and Northfield, or whatever.
That's not... that's not really part of the zoning thing, though. That's a town initiative, that's not so much something that we write a bylaw and someone's going to develop that for.
No, that's part of more of a vision, which I think, you know, that would be part of master planning for that, where we would sort of set up some goals to develop certain things to meet, which while we're doing the village, right, but you kind of have to have that whole vision, you know, to decide, you know, like, one might be that, but not really changing the zoning for retail commercial activity much. You know, the goal might be, hey, let's protect and make it more enjoyable. And the other one might be, let's protect, make it a little bit more enjoyable, but also make it more economically robust. So I think those are the kind... you know, and there might be stuff in between, like it's like, let's select specific sites or certain areas that we want to ramp up the economic activity. And these are the kind of things we're going to have to explore a little bit, I think. You'll end up with kind of a range in there. Anyways, I'm kind of babbling, but one thing that was missing from the model bylaw, I think, is that enjoy... that part around that, but you're right, there's limited things about zoning there. And we can do things with zoning and sidewalks, and if you build, you have to have sidewalk out in front, and some of our design bylaw stuff supports walkability, if we were to apply that here as well. So there's sort of some intersection, you know, where the zoning supports the vision as well, but anyways, I think I've babbled enough.
I look forward to it. Our center needs to dramatically change. And I look at the gas station, and I know I harp on that, but I pulled up the tax information on that, and it's $10,000 more this year we're going to get in tax revenue for that one gas station this year. So it's money that's coming in that's going to offset our tax burden for the elderly, and I think we just... we need to really start looking and getting these things in these vacant buildings to get the $180,000 back in our bankroll and have money coming in, so... and provide services to our residents.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I mean, a lot of that, yeah, I think we're all on board with that.
Yeah, we've been... we've, three years have been talking about it, and it's time to now act, so...
One comment about what Shantel put together there, I mean, I think that's a good start, and I think, you know, I didn't read the model bylaw before the meeting, but I'd like to take another look at that. I guess the... what Shantel, you know, was an improvement on the existing bylaw, I think? And I guess there was a lot of... it was pretty complicated. There was a lot of, you know...
Yeah, I wrote it right in, so it would be consistent with what you have currently. If there is a way you'd like me to streamline it, I can try to do it that way, but I just wanted to make sure that it was consistent with what you had right now, so...
Well, and I think learnings for me, the Chief's House, Trudy Streets, you know, we know they shouldn't be residential A. So, you know, those are things that... well, I know I shouldn't... I'm sorry, I just took ownership from my board, and I apologize for that. I feel that it, you know, definitely shouldn't be residential A.
And I feel like you took a lot of that verbiage from our limited business district, I think. Seemed like it's looking through it, it looks very similar. But I wouldn't champion our limited business district as an economic developer, really. I think we need something more streamlined than that and something more open than that. And... because if you read through, like, Rotten's per se, I keep bringing that up, but it kind of calls out any small business. It doesn't really... it doesn't list the business types, which I think is so cumbersome about ours right now, is the fact that it goes through and lists these things, because who knows what a business is going to be? You really can't think...
That's exactly what I wanted to get rid of.
But do they have a use table?
I don't...
I know you guys... I mean, some towns choose not to do a use table, but then other towns, you know, kind of use it as a tool.
Yes, we have a use table, list what uses are in each.
Okay, I just thought it was narrated in your bylaw.
Just to read off what they have, they go through with five bullet points. They say, "small-scale retail store or service establishment, business or professional offices, restaurant or other place for serving food, but not including drive-through service, mixed-use development consisting of two or more of the above-listed uses, mixed-use residential development consisting of one or more of the above-listed uses, together with duplex dwellings and/or multifamily dwellings. So, I think that covers all the bases, I mean, if something crazy comes through, then, I mean, if we're doing this, say, as special permit, or whatever, however we choose to do it, or we break it out, but, I would feel comfortable listing those five things off, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we, I know we have a list of what can go in residential A, what can go in commercial.
I, I like that general nature there, and then we can talk about what's by right, and what's special permit. I guess the, the thing I wouldn't want to, so, less emphasis on, you know, really exhaust, like, that is about as detailed about uses, I personally would like to see.
Yeah.
It's almost, yeah. And then maybe if there's a few uses that we want to force either exclude, or be under special permit, I don't know, adult uses, or whatever, you know, we can talk about what they would be, but, in general, I think we want it to be pretty permissive, but where I think, we, we focus our preservation and protection efforts around the other aspects, like, you know, limiting the square, the dimensional stuff, like, you know, the building can't be, buildings can't be more than X percent of the lot, and, you know, they have to adhere to the design bylaw, and they have to meet these noise standards, or whatever, so.
You're going to want to address parking.
Parking, yes, yeah, yeah, so, it has to have adequate parking, not too much, all those kind of things, because basically, if it, if something addresses, you know, noise, you know, it's not producing whatever smells that it shouldn't, and, you know, it's aesthetically within the design bylaw, it's got adequate parking, you know, it's not, then, I think, it almost, it matters relatively little what exactly they're doing.
And if you want to start from someplace, I mean, I looked at historic district guidelines for, I pulled up Concord, because I figured that's probably a comprehensive one, and it is 95 pages long.
You wanted 95 pages long?
But, but, these, these are guidelines, this isn't, this is a separate document that you issue as guidelines. None of them, it says right in here, none of, this isn't a prescription or mandatory, it's a, it's a starting point to work with the board.
Right.
And I've run into this as an architect, too, with other communities, they have things like this, especially Cape Cod, doing work down there, they have the Cape Cod Commission that hands out, one of these.
We made guidelines for you guys with this bylaw last winter, they kind of got lost, though, I don't know how you guys didn't get a copy of them, but.
We got, we got a copy, a paper copy, yeah, and we probably got an electronic copy, too.
You can revise those, if you want them to be more inclusive, have more things like Concord has, depends on how detailed you want to get with them. It really just showed different styles of development, but showing that classic type of village district, like your Colonials and your Victorian houses, that would be in your village district, so, anyways.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds great, I guess, I, and, what you had before seemed like a great start, and, I guess I'd like to focus, I mean, what you did, just by pushing out, saying, hey, here's a draft bylaw, that was great to get that, because I think, if you, if, if we can, if we're in agreement about kind of the direction around simplification that we're talking about here, and the board, we can, I mean, you guys, Matt and Joanna, say, then, like, if you can take this input and iterate that, and, you know, he's talking, he's talked about the Groton bylaw, and the state model bylaw, I know this is awful thing to do to you, but you're, you seem real smart, and you know this stuff way better than we do, so, if you can start to take this input, and start to think, you know, based on what we're saying, try to take a stab, continuing to rev that thing, based on this kind of feedback, I think that's what's going to really help us move forward, because after a few meetings, you're going to have something that we all say, wow, I love this thing, when can we sign it, you know? I think that, that would, if you have the time.
Well, we learned that from the marijuana bylaw. The minute you get it on writing, it's now something that you can tangibly change, alter, add, but when you don't have it, you just continue talking about it. So, once it becomes on pen to paper, it, it brings a whole new level to it.
And I hope what we find in this visioning session can inform a lot of that, too, I guess, as far as the design standards anyways, and the setbacks, and things of that nature, and the uses.
Well, the dimensional standards were never addressed during this draft, so that's definitely the second part of it.
That's going to be a hot topic, too, yeah, I identified that, and looking through some of the sample ones that you gave, with some of them limited to, say, 10,000 square feet, other ones say no dimensional regulations, and we're going to have to look at what we feel comfortable with, because we have a lot of very small properties in the center of town, and if we want to call any of them conforming, we're going to have to be, you know.
So, yeah, maybe you want to put a placeholder there for dimensional standards, and then add examples from Groton, examples from the model, just like a few different.
I would go straight to your dimensional.
Bylaw.
Standards that you have, it's, it'll be in a different section, but I'll pull them up, and, I, in the presentation I gave in December.
Yep.
I did list, like, three towns with their dimensionals, at least their lot requirements, not their setbacks, but maybe I could just give you a sampling of what other towns have done?
Yeah, give us like, I would, it'd be awesome to me, anyways, I don't want to speak, if you give us like, A, B, C, and D, where, or whatever, maybe it's just A, B, maybe it's A, B, and C, three, like, distinct, maybe one is like, what we got now, B is something that, like, allows for, I don't know, more compact development, and C is something else in between, or whatever. I mean, if you give us choices, we're good, we're good at multiple choice, kind of thing, we can have a discussion on that. But if you just put ours in there, then we're not going to, you're not going to stretch, you're not going to stretch us and push us, and we're just going to have that conversation.
It's always good to see what the, you know, what they call, what the communities are doing, and then, you know, you kind of migrate to the places that you like to go, and you kind of say, okay, what have they got, you know? So, if you can think of any town centers that you, that you really like, that you feel like they have a good mix of small businesses, and they have that walkability, and, you know, they have, you know, activities and whatnot on the weekends, and things of that nature, you know, definitely let me know if you've found other communities that I haven't thought of, so.
Well, I don't, I mean, not that this is not important, but, for the walkability and the activities and stuff like that, we have the sidewalks, we're all very compact in the center of town here, we just really need to fill in the gaps, and get those businesses bringing people down here to enjoy the walkability, give them a place to park, and give them a destination. I mean, it's not like we have to put in sidewalks everywhere, because we pretty much have those in the center of town, it's just more like filling in the gaps.
I'm, I'm just saying, if there are other towns that have kind of done what you want to do, then we can take a look at their regulations, and see what they've done, if there's, you know, if it's still moving forward, if it's still, new businesses are going in, things of that nature, you know?
So, for now, until we get back to it, say, plop a couple of your favorites, or the things like, we've talked about Groton, where, plop a few of the alternatives, like, for dimensioning, plop the alternatives right into the draft document, and make it clear it's like mutually exclusive type of stuff.
Okay.
Well, I think we could also mention why we like specific ones, like, I love Groton's town center for a number of reasons, it's walkable, the sidewalks on both sides, it's, it's accessible, there's parking on both sides of the street, a lot of the businesses there have additional parking lots, I mean, and, and the street is lined with either public buildings, or, or private, like the schools, and, and businesses. That, that's a fabulous thing, just to, to, to mention, I'm glad you guys brought that up, to, to picture things that we like, and then just kind of go with those as we're thinking about Lunenburg, is, is an excellent idea.
That's a good thing, we should be bringing options like that to that second visioning session, when we involve the public and their ideas moving forward, because, a lot of them don't care specifically what Nathan wants, or what I want, or what Matt wants, they, they're going to have their own input, and it's going to have to be a blend of what we want, and clearly what the public wants, because they, they're the ones we're working for here.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
And one more thing, on the historical aspect, the Lunenburg Red Book, that published in 1979, Ms. Benson gave all of us a copy of it.
Yep.
That is a fabulous resource, and that, that's already gone through a lot of the historical legwork for the town, historical date, 35 years ago, they, they went through, and they, they put it together, a great history.
Surprisingly, there's a profound amount of history that got left out of there, too.
Oh, I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised, but, but that is a fabulous resource.
Historic, I'm going to rely heavily on Jim Larkin and the rest of the Historic Society helped put together a good presentation, because they are the keepers of all that.
Yes, they are, and they do a great job at it.
And, yeah, if what we're on, historic preservation, like, that's another thing, going through the bylaw, I personally, as we deal with historic district, would like to see us, especially if we end up doing something that's more permissive with zoning and uses and whatnot. I, I mean, I don't, we'll have to see what the town and the board thinks, but my personal opinion is, I would like to see the, the protective bylaw radically strengthened, in terms of.
The demolition delay.
Yeah, not be a delay.
Yeah.
And I've heard that Cambridge, for example, has a really rigid one, you know, like.
I think we already have, actually, some, some language that I discovered in our limited business district that could be modified to help protect it, because right now, we have a line that says something along the line of, a house can't be knocked down for use of anything besides a house. So, if we want to put some language in there, for instance, building over 75 years old, or whatever, can't be knocked down for anything other than a house, without approval of the Historic Commission, or approval of the Planning Board.
Or by vote at town meeting.
Because, yeah, well, I, I, I just, I mean, I just don't want to say, I don't want to tell anyone that they can't do something with their own home, but if they're going to knock it down and put a business up, that's when I think we can get involved and say.
If they're going to purchase a historic building in Lunenburg Town Center, I think protecting the historical heritage of Lunenburg, you can't rebuild, practically speaking, demolish a house built in 1780, you can't come back 10 years later and build a house.
It's true.
In 1780.
It's just time travel.
Don't, can't do it. So, you know, I honestly, I think when people buy historical properties in Lunenburg, they should know what they're getting into, and that we should put a bylaw in place, similar to what other towns like Cambridge, I bet you Concord has one, which forbid demolition.
Well, no, they all usually have demolition delay bylaws, again.
Nah, some of them have very strong prohibitions against demolition.
We can look into that a little bit more.
I would, yeah.
It would be good to look into it, but again, I would caution you, this is something, my understanding of town history is, we barely got the demolition delay bylaw approved, because people don't like to be told what to do with their property. So, I just don't want to lean too heavily on something like that, without surveying, or getting a public meeting together, the people actually live in the town center, and we're talking about their homes, because they're not knowing what they're walking into, they've owned these homes for a long time, and, I just, you know, they have to be on board with this more than anyone else, so I don't want to tell them what to do with their homes, it's my own thing, without, without them coming in and saying, yeah, we're okay with that.
Sure, I mean, obviously, we've got to engage the town, but I would like, part of the conversation to be, I would like to have on the table, an understanding of what a strict, highly protective historic bylaw would look like. I think, look at Cambridge, look at, I bet you Concord has something pretty tight as well, but I know for sure Cambridge does, just so that we can present to the town that alternative. I mean, maybe, there's, like, Cambridge, I think, has alternatives, like, you know, you can relocate things and whatnot, but, yeah.
We'll look at that, all right. Anything else under the village district bylaw?
I will move forward with the, or you have something?
I do, actually.
Any support you need on that, Damon, call me, I'll help you, even advertising, getting it on the Channel 8, and all that.
Yeah, as soon as we have a date set up for it, that'll be great to have any help.
Absolutely, any help I can facilitate, please.
Do you all have copies of the latest packet from back in December? She, she did put them in here, did you want a copy?
I have it in here, I printed it, but, you want them?
Do you want them, okay.
You want a copy?
Sure. So you could take it home and.
Peruse.
Yeah.
Make sure it's the same.
All right, 250 Whalum Row, Wes, what are you here for?
The site here, I was just curious what the board was going to talk about.
Oh, all right, I didn't know if you were waiting to come in front of me.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I'm involved with the site also, so.
Whalum? Okay.
This is Lunenburg Village, technically.
I think this is one.
No, it's a 40B over on.
Yes. All right, 250 Whalum Row, Lunenburg Village, we got a memo from the Zoning Board of Appeals in our package, they are going with Massachusetts Ave, 120 units, five apartment buildings on 41 acres, located at 250 Whalum Road, and they've provided you a schematic of all the, the layout, what the houses look like, front and sides, inside, the footprint, the zoning, as you all know, we were part of that, they went to Townsend, and did a walkabout in Gary Lorden's building he had done over in Townsend, so.
She only gave one copy, so if you want to.
I think we all have them, that's what.
You, okay.
Do we all have them?
Left on, please.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Do you want my hand? I printed it, so.
Probably have it.
Yeah, don't worry about it, I got papers, I got enough papers to. Have a little fire. So, and this is just, they were informing us that Gary did decide to, I'm sorry, Mr. Lorden, did decide to go with the 120 units, and, is this all of them? Do you have more over there, Matthew?
There should be three of them left.
There was a folder. That's why I'm asking, do you have the folder on the end?
I don't think we got it.
So, when you say, they decided this is the builder, the ZBA, both?
No, Gary went.
So, is he refiling a new application altogether, is that what's happening?
Not as of yet, this was the, the hearing, the continuation, he was going to move forward with getting them plans for the 120 units, that was the last zoning, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, was he was walking away, going to get plans drawn up, he didn't want to invest money if it wasn't an option, so they had said, no, go get those plans, and they're going to, I, my understanding was they were looking at the 63-bedroom homes, and the 120 apartments, was kind of what was on the table for them, just their opinions, round robin, round robbing around the table.
Yep.
So, that, I lost my paper, I gave it to Nathan.
Here you go.
Now, the next meeting is the, May 28th at 7:00 PM, and this is the continuation of the public hearing. So, they were just letting us know, and they're asking, please attend or submit in writing prior to the next scheduled meeting, if you have any anticipated comments. So, if there's anything you want to send to the ZBA for this, this is your forum to do so.
Yeah, I would just like to voice, for the numerous, again, the, the name, Lunenburg Village, is, I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about doing a bylaw on right now, and, if we allow a 40B to take it, then we won't have the availability to use it.
And that, I believe that request has been made by the owner of the Lunenburg Village, so, the owner of the Lunenburg Village, because that's what this is already called, has made that, he was at the public hearing and made that request as well, so, that's on the table.
Another voice, good, hopefully it gets heard.
I can't wait for a week.
I liked, I liked Nathan's comments, the last meeting, I had not, I had not reviewed them, prior to.
What comments did you do?
The comments, there were, there were some, there were some, some potential adjustments, things to look at, potentially increasing the density of the units, potentially increasing the stories of the buildings. I like, I like the idea of looking at things outside the box a little bit, you know, to, to get a feel for what could be versus what, what, what the developer wants to propose to us. I, I really do think that we need to start looking heavily at benefit for the entire town. It, it's, it's unfortunate that Whalum has become so developed, that a lot of the residents don't feel like it's home anymore, and that's unfortunate, and I, I can't, I can't say enough about how unfortunate that is, but, that is the area that we have, as a town, developed our infrastructure to support such density, and, it, it kind of appears that that might be the, the best outlook for the town, to increase its density, and increase its citizens, and, without, without increasing the development of farmlands, open lands, wide, wide areas, you know, a 67-unit development on 200 acres, if we could, if we could localize population, I think there's a great benefit to be had, especially in an area that's already quite capable of doing so. That's my comments, Lunenburg Village.
Yeah, I, I understand your argument that density brings more people to spur on more economy, but, I just, I don't, I don't agree, I don't wholly agree with it, because, we're so far behind in our economic development because of, well, I think, some of the things are outdated planning, but that's just, it's not so much that we lagged on that, the town wanted to be a bedroom community for a long time, and, it's kind of come to bite us, because we've got our head where we have no, we have such a top-heavy residential aspect to our town, I think we have enough people to support some commerce, so I'm not in a rush to densify anything, really, but, I mean, he's a 40B, and he can go forward with whatever, I was just, I'm just not in a hurry to densify anything, myself, personally.
So, yeah, so, I guess, with respect to what Matt was saying about my comments, so, yeah, you know, those comments were, yeah, so, I, I think he and I are pretty much on the same page overall, I think, I'm pretty happy, like, I wrote those before seeing the plans, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited, I mean, given what, given a 40B and what it could be, I mean, I didn't get to do the site walk in Townsend with the, I didn't see, do the site walk, but I heard that there were some pretty, these were pretty attractive units, they're 75% market rate, it looks like a nice site layout, from what I understand, if, if it's still like what I understand, which is the developer is going to preclude all development on the.
Marshall Park side, going to the park, right?
Uh, Marshall Park, like the south.
Uh, Marshall Park, like the south.
Uh, McNally, McNally Field, I apologize.
Pleasant Ave, Piedmont Ave side.
Yeah, closer to, um, Summer Street, like, there's a, there's a, as you go down Whalum towards Summer Street, there's a parcel there that's, that's gonna be left undeveloped, you know, Piedmont and Pleasant, which I, you know, I know some resi, I haven't talked to too many residents, I mean, it would be worth getting more feedback, but I know for some residents, they're happy to see that, you know, not being impacted, what we heard from the ZBA and the ZBA's consultant was that the, in general, there's been some positive feedback from the residents about the way this plan is being done in terms of, you know, the butters, like, on the Whalum Ave side and whatnot, so, I mean, I defer to the ZBA to address the butters' concerns, but from what I know of this plan, I see some really positive things there about putting recreation or conservation space on that Whalum Ave part, I think what Matt was saying about the density, I, you know, I think that, that is a part of town which, um, there'll be, you know, potentially some positive effects, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have density anywhere else in town, we're gonna be talking more about both, uh, re, looking at commercial zones and, uh, housing, uh, portion of master plan and zoning coming up, I, I'd actually like to see both those on our next meeting agenda if possible, so we can start having those conversations, I don't want to make it sound like this is the only part of Lunenburg that can be dense, um, you know, I, I look forward to working with Chantel and our new planning director to, as part of those conversations, discuss this issue about how to grow in a smart way, but given, you know, I, I, I think what I've seen in my limited time at town, I've been in town nine, about nine years, and I think, um, because 40Bs, you know, are something that we don't have much control over through the bylaws that we work with the town to develop, I think there's a lot of value in, in trying to get ahead of that with our housing plan in a manner that we can have more control over our own destiny, and I think the 40B, I think what the state's trying to do, and I appreciate their goals, I think we do need to, you know, support, you know, a diversity of incomes in Lunenburg, and, you know, Damon's spoken to this about how it can be a hard place to, to live in, I know that he's not so interested in the rental side of it and whatnot, and, you know, maybe the, but, um, but I guess, long story short is, I personally, like, uh, Matt, think this was a really, from my perspective and the planning standpoint, given where it is, given the alternatives, th, this was a, a pretty positive development to, to see this 120, uh, one and two-bedroom, um, you know, tastefully designed rental buildings with a tasteful site configuration and some useful protection of some open spaces there, so that's all, I'll just be quiet about that now.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing, sorry, so about the, the stories and the creative, I, I agree with what you're saying about, it's good as we go forward and look about housing to be creative about it, in this particular case, I, I'm pretty content with where they landed, partly because, like, even Emerald Place, when they designed that, they had proposed five-story massing, um, at the, at the request of the planning board, we asked them to reconfigure it three-story, three or four-story massing, so I think that what, um, the developer's proposing here at Lunenburg Village, I, you know, on the, on the face of, I feel like what he's coming out of the gates with is actually pretty good with our historically expressed intents, and it does, it is pretty, still pretty out of the box, and achieves a lot of planning goals, so now I'm really gonna be quiet about it, so I'm, I'm happy with the proposal personally, and I guess, I mean, the question is, do we wanna send, is a board, how do we, do we feel, wanna make a motion to send planning board support to the ZBA about this, that's, before we wrap up tonight, I think that's a question we wanna ask.
No, I think they're just saying if you have any constructive suggestions, they're, their exact words, if you have any comments or constructive suggestions, um, and they did it last meeting, and that's when we sat down with the gentleman and we got a lot of great information, so, uh, yeah, Whalum, um, it, it's tough because there's, there's property that goes up for sale and, and people purchase that property and they're, they're allowed to do what they wanna do with that property as long as it adheres to our bylaws, so, and, and it's just like right now, Whalum, Whalum Drive is empty, so something's gonna go there, and it's not that we're purposely looking at Whalum, it's, that's where the property is available, um, and they, you know, we just bought the lane property and I think Whalum's feeling, well, we buy property in other parts of the town, well, well, that good offer hasn't happened in the Whalum area as of, as of yet, we haven't, um, found a good proposal like we had with the lane, and, and we had to purchase the lane because it was such an economically good deal for the town of Lunenburg, so, um, but I think, uh.
If you want something constructive out of me, I guess, is what they're asking for, instead of saying just no density, I don't know how it would work with a 40B, but moving forward, if we talk about housing elements, I would like to see commercial integrated into it, like.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused, are you recommend, anybody here recommending we write a letter with specific bullets to the zoning board of appeals? Cause that's what they're looking for, they're looking for.
Why don't you finish your comments first, and then let's talk about that question?
Yeah.
Okay, cause my comment is, is, um, I think, watching that last meeting, I think the zoning board of appeals was very questionable, asked a lot of great questions, I believe, is his name, was it Dick, what was the gentleman's name?
Oh, yeah, Dick.
He was on the end, he asked a lot of great things, and I think the residents asked a lot of great questions, I think Gary, uh, Mr. Lorden answered, and I thought there was a lot of great dynamic going on, it was a three-hour public hearing, and, and I, I don't think I need to write to the zoning board of appeals with my, because I think they're doing a good job handling it, um, I'm concerned, you know, around drainage and frontage and vegetation, um, buffering, all of those things, and I'm, I'm sure that that will all be adhered to, um, but I, I don't feel I need to write a letter with any.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Comments or concerns, I, I watched the meeting for three hours and, and I thought it was very informative, I thought there were a lot of residents there that had a lot of good points, because, and, and right now, you can't, because I'm usually for the resident, and, and they were mixed, it wasn't like they were all going for the apartments or they were all going for the three-bedroom, each of them, with the group, both liked, some liked the houses, some liked the apartments, there was a mixed variety, so it's not that we could even rally behind one of the ideas, because there was such a mixed idea throughout the residents in the community itself, so, that's my.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and it sounds like as a board, I, I mean, it sounds like we, we have some different shades of opinion on this, I mean, I think you're making a really good point, it's not clear-cut, all the residents want this, and I guess, one, if we were to send a letter, one type of letter, I guess, I, to the extent that, you know, by, I guess, one of the potential value, if we were to send a letter of support, is to, you know, help, um, help the ZBA, you know, provide them, allow them to show additional, uh, rationale for whatever decision they make, so one type of letter I would, personally would consider sending would be, you know, you know, the ZBA, thanks for providing us the information product, basically all other things being equal, like residents' opinion of impact, you know, that from a planning standpoint, this is my opinion, in my, you know, from a planning standpoint, there are benefits to, to the 120, the rental 120-unit project, when compared with the, um, the, whatever, 60.
Three bedrooms.
60 or 80, in, in particular, um, superior progress towards our, um, SHI, subsidized housing inventory targets, um, and also providing the, uh, the people, the residential support to help foster, uh, local retail, local business development and the Chase and Summer Street corridors, that's kind of like what my, so it wouldn't be like, you gotta do this, it would be, you know, other things being equal, you know, if, if the residents are kind of, if it's like, good for some, not good for other, you gotta make a decision, there's planning value in the 120 versus the 60, that's my opinion, isn't that kind of like, if, that way, Don and the, Mr. Bowen and the ZBA have to make this decision, which is potentially controversial, they're not out there flapping in the breeze by themselves, you know, they can say, well, you know, the planning board said, other things being equal, there's some planning value here, so that's.
So, are you making a motion to send a letter supporting the 120 apartments to the zoning board of appeals?
With, with that rationale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the letter?
Yeah, I just don't wholly agree with the statement, but, cause when I look at things, another important aspect that I consider a planning issue is our town budget and what those residential units do to it, what twice as many units are gonna do to the town budget compared to the 60, we know for a fact that it costs more to take care of a residence, send the kids to school, than that residence is gonna generate in tax revenue, so that's what I look at when I see those numbers inflated, personally, and I don't think where our town budget is right now, where taxes are right now, where we're trying to bring economic development to the town, and the fact that we have a flat tax rate, raising those taxes, making it tougher for things to get done, tougher for the, tougher for us to improve our infrastructure, cause roads are a huge deal right now, increasing costs of the town and not generating profit for the town is a planning issue for me, that's where I personally prefer less residential units.
Go ahead.
So, no, great, great point, Damon, I guess, I, I think in terms of goals, I, I don't disagree, I think, I guess I would take a little bit longer view, in my opinion, longer view of some of the impacts, um, one, one impact is, as far as roads go, having some higher density development is more efficient from an infrastructure standpoint than continuing to do single-family homes on, you know, one-acre lots everywhere, um, secondly, you know, I, we definitely need to reform, you know, our commercial zoning and, and definitely look at the taxation issues there in ways that can, you know, foster commercial growth and get revenue from that commercial growth in an appropriate way that doesn't hinder the growth, um, I, I think it's not, I, I mean, I defer to, you know, more planning expert input on this, but, um, the relationship between population and commercial growth, I think, yes, population will, will create costs on the school side, but having certain types of population, certain areas might also help stimulate some of the growth, the other tax base that you're gonna get revenue out of as well, and the other, last thing I'll mention is, from a housing standpoint, these are one- and two-bedroom apartments that are proposed, so it may not be, it's not gonna have the same impact, uh, as an equivalent number of 2,500 square foot, single-family homes would, most likely, I don't, I don't, you know, I think your child per household's gonna be lower and whatnot because of the, the smaller living space footprint, but, but I think it's great you're bringing those points up, and I agree with the spirit of it, I just kinda, you know, I, I just don't, I maybe see it playing out a little differently. I think that it's, it's, it's an excellent opportunity that the ZBA has given us to have input on something that is not going before us, um, and I would like to thank them in this letter for giving us the, uh, opportunity for input, um, and I think that we can, as a board, in the letter, say that we like greater density because of, or, and we don't like greater density because of, and everybody's comments and feelings will be addressed, and I don't think anybody has disagreed on the reasons that we think density is good, or the reasons that we think it's not good, I think that they're just opposing factors of the issue, but they're not opposing each other's fa, issue, I mean, like, um, the greater density because of, um, the, the schools is.
Can I rein you guys in a bit?
Alright.
I think, in particular, in regards to the project, um, you may wanna keep it simple and really speak to the project, um, I think the larger idea about hashing out density and, you know, what's good for the town, what isn't good for the town, that's really for your master plan, I think that's kind of where you're gonna hash it out and you kind of get that goal, um, you know, solidified, um.
That's what you're saying.
You know, um.
Well, I think it would be, um, cause I, I don't know that I am for 120 apartments or 60 three-bedroom houses, I have not made in my mind that decision yet, um, there's the school issue, so to send a letter of support of the 120 apartments, I, I would not feel comfortable doing, and it would be a two-two vote, so I.
Yeah, and I guess, what I interpret Chantel as saying is that, until we've embodied kind of the goal in our master plan, we're kind of shooting from the hip.
Yeah, you kind of are, and as you can tell, everyone has a little bit of a different take on it, so you, you might be here a while.
Well, yeah, and it looks like.
My, my issue was, and I use, I use Trittown and Emerald, and, and my understanding was, our school choice numbers went up because of the rent, lease to own at Emerald and the apartments at Trittown, because the people are sending their children, they're moving in there, they're in our budget, but they're staying in their schools, so someone that lived in Lemonster and moved into Emerald Place is still putting their child in Emerald Place, in Lemonster School System, so our, our school dollars, school choice dollars has increased due to those numbers, I believe was my understanding when we were having conversations last year in the budget process of why our school choice numbers went up so high.
Okay.
So, and I believe one of the action items that came out of that meeting was they were going to look at those and ask Superintendent Combs to come and clarify that, so, and that's part of, for me, that, that factor is, because we're, we're trying to get the school choice number down.
If we're on the housing subject anyways, I do have the scope prepared, um, John put it together for the, uh, housing production plan, if you guys wanted to take a look, we wanted to get comments.
Well, wait.
Is this on our agenda today?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Master planning?
Master planning.
Okay.
But we're, we.
Let's wrap up.
If you're not wrapping up, if we're on hous, and we're, we're talking about housing, I just figured.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I just think the letter, well, are we, are we wrapping up or are we doing the housing?
Let's wrap up on the ZBA thing first, so I, I guess, you know, um, I understand, I don't even, right now, know what the, I doubt the master, current master plan has a firm stance that would support a planning board opinion on this issue, so.
Right, and I.
It looks like we're split anyway, so, all things considered.
Just keep it to the project.
Let's just put it to bed for now, for tonight, you know, I withdraw the motion, um, yeah, I think it's a good conversation, I think this is the kind of conversation we're gonna have to have as we look at, at housing in more detail, so I don't regret, haven't had it, you raised, last thing, you raised an interesting point about land acquisitions, I think, given the increased density over there, I do think that's an area that, you know, in terms of whatever, recreational infrastructure, whatever town should look, we had talked before a little bit about maybe getting together a proposal about land acquisition on Lake Whalum to support a significant expansion of the beach, I think something like that's something we could look at in the future, but, I, you know, I withdraw the motion, I'm all happy with.
I agree.
Talk for tonight.
Okay, master plan.
Here you go.
Housing element and housing production plan. Good night.
Thanks, Wes.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Um, so this is just the draft, scope of services that would be going into the contract that we're preparing, um, for your, for the town for the housing production plan, and I just wanted to go over the scope with you, um, the timeline and whatnot, um, to get any comments you may have on it, so I can bring this back to John, he'll, he'll tweak it, and then he's gonna send it to the Board of Selectmen's office, so.
And is the housing element already geared for?
Well, we're doing the housing production plan first, um, so that will be done first, and then it'll be incorporated into the element, um, so I think that's the, the plan of action at this point, so this will be the first step, um, getting the housing produ, production plan contract all situated.
Any questions? Damon, you good?
Good.
Matthew?
Yep, looks good, thanks.
Nathan?
Yeah, I, this looks good, but I have a few things I'd like to discuss, if, if you may.
Go ahead.
That's, that's fine.
Um, I'm wondering if this, um, housing production, oh, this is for just the housing production plan or stuff?
The housing production.
Yeah, the housing element will come after this.
We're, we're, we're doing two separate contracts, I keep it simple, um. We're, we're, we're doing two separate contracts, so keep it simple, um, for the housing production plan, and then we'll do another contract for the housing element.
But they're all funded within that money we have.
Yes, yes.
I don't want you to tell me I don't have enough money.
No, no, and the only reason why we're doing this contract first, and John and I discussed whether we should include it into one plan or separate it, and we said for finances' sake, it would be easier to do two separate contracts, two, two separate tasks.
As long as, as long as my money covers those two, I don't want, I don't want...
It does, and...
Anybody coming to me six months and say, oh, no, we ran out of money?
In the larger contract, this does say that DLTM money will be put toward this project.
Perfect.
But this contract now is just addressing the portion that you're designating towards the housing production plan. Because Marjorie informed me, if you don't get the contract and invoice it at a certain time, you guys may lose that money.
Right, yeah, so we want to get this in and seal that.
So, yeah, so I mean, that's, I'm good with that. I guess, we have a plan as far as, so, I mean, the, one of the main, there's a few different goals for housing production plan, but I think the main impetus right now is for us to get a safe harbor status for a couple of years. That's kind of the main impetus, to get it done rapidly, and I can appreciate that. And so that's, that's cool. I guess if, if that weren't there, it'd actually be kind of nice to have the housing element done, to inform the production plan, you know, because like, part of production plan, if I understand, is like designating, potentially designating areas of town.
As far as I could, or I understood, Sam Lawton, who's a planner on our staff, he, he works primarily on these housing production plans, and he said the housing production plan really is a housing element, it just happens to be a lot more detailed. If anything, you'll be paring it down a bit, um, when you go to make the element, especially in regards to the schedule that goes into a housing production plan. It's, 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 there's quite a bit of work that goes into the schedule, your housing schedule. So he says that's probably the larger step beyond a housing element with my conversation with him, so...
So this is actually, you're saying, housing elements, this, this is like...
This is bigger than your housing.
This is bigger than the housing element.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me talk to you, a couple of planning goals and see where do they fit.
Okay.
So, okay, I see affordable housing goals is, is right here.
Mm-hmm.
So if we wanted to look at our house, our zoning with regards to housing as effects, infrastructure efficiency and economic development, um, do that type of analysis, not just purely affordable, but kind of more broadly.
Look at more broadly.
Is that part of housing production plan? Is it part of housing element? Is it part of both?
I, I'm not 100% sure about the housing production plan, but, um, I know within the housing element and the master plan, you do make those connections.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's okay, that's what I want to, so I can wait till, till housing element for that, I guess, because I do, I think that's really important for us to address. Ideally, if we had that in place, that would affect, maybe affect things like, you know, like what parts of town we think are, you know, we...
Appropriate.
Most appropriate for large, you know, high-density, affordable housing.
Or mixed use, or...
Or mixed use.
Yeah.
Perfect, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we did, we've started stuff like, like Summer Street corridors, already defined, I think, as mixed use. It's pretty cool. But that's, the other, the other thing I want to deal with at some point, I don't know if it's production plan or housing element, is revisiting some of our, like, things like our cluster bylaw, both in light of what we've learned about its construction from a legal standpoint right now. We, there may be opportunities to improve it, to even better protect the town in the future.
And that could be a recommendation that comes out of...
The production?
The production plan or your housing element.
Or the housing element?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think there's also opportunities to look at, you know, I don't know, you know, sometimes like these housing needs assessments, I don't know, you know, how up-to-date these were, are in terms of housing trends, but I think in terms of like, the nature of what our zoning sort of encourages, like, we're probably still kind of, and I said we might get rid of this altogether, but, you know, our zoning is still kind of large lot, single family. We have a cluster bylaw, but there might be some opportunities to do some things there in different areas of the town to kind of provide more interesting, allow developers to develop more interesting housing choices in a way that's more compatible with today's families' economic needs, you know, not just low income, but all income, and also our town's environmental and conservation goals and whatnot. So that's, I mean, it's not a little conversation for five minutes tonight. I don't know if it's a housing production plan thing. Maybe housing production plan's more focused on big picture and, you know, affordable, and then that's something we deal with, the element, but it's, that's the kind of topic I want to...
And this is a little more general, and you'll get into those minor, you know, those finer details, as soon as I can get Sam here in front of you and you can start asking those types of questions.
For the production plan or for the element?
He'll, he'll be doing both.
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, yeah, because I just don't see which buckets here on this list, those kind of things fall into.
Yeah, and I can, I can understand that. And what, I think, you know, maybe I could even ask, um, maybe Sam could provide an outline, or, we also have some other, the housing production plans we've worked on before, if you want to take a look at those, to get a sense and an idea of, you know, what we've put together for a few other towns.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good, sounds like it'll be a good process.
Okay.
Great. All right. Anything else on master planning? The housing element and the housing production plan? All right, reminder, meeting schedule is, our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, May 27th, because Memorial Day is the Monday. So we'll be meeting May 27th, June 9th here, that'll be at the Ritter Building, June 9th here, June 23rd at the Ritter Building. Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Board comments?
Matt?
Thank you.
Talked enough tonight.
Um, I've talked enough tonight too, but when did I let that stop me?
Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, my member issue is, I mentioned earlier, I guess, so given that we're going to be doing a housing production plan, I guess, in June, for our next meeting, I guess, I'd like to, if we could please, if, no, if there's not a major objection, get, start discussing what we're thinking about in terms of overhauling our commercial, what we're going to do for economic development, whether it's around commercial bylaw, what we might for master plan, whether it's recommendations around taxation, whatever, start to have that conversation, because we've informally talked about a bunch of different things. I just want to start to, you know...
You do have your economic development chapter that you can refer to. I think there was a bunch of goals set there, so maybe review that.
Review the economic development chapter of master plan?
Mm-hmm.
And then come and discuss what we think needs...
What's your next step?
Okay.
If you're going to start to want to try to do some sort of implementation of it?
So the economic development plan was one of the ones, one of the two that had been done since 2002?
Um, yeah, John had done it last year. He presented you a draft, um, last December. And I think we have it electronically, so we can email it to you.
That would be awesome.
Okay. That way you guys can review it and, um, you know, get a sense of it. I don't know if you formally accepted it.
I don't think we did.
All right, so that's something to take a look at, I guess, so we can, we can send that to you.
That'd be great. And I encourage people, any of the wild ideas that they've had kicking around their head, whether it was, you know...
Well, and I guess, next to that bullet, I would put that we need to, you know, formally accept it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we had, if we got the draft in December, and it's, it's been on hiatus since, you know, why didn't we accept it in December? What was, was there a follow-up that was supposed to happen? I don't know, but...
I'm not quite sure. You might have to revisit your minutes, because my memory is not working that good.
I don't think we deliberated on it. We were presented it.
Yeah.
I don't think it was, it wasn't like it was bad, but I don't know if it's everything we want either, so I think...
Right, I, I don't remember now.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should deliberate on it. And, yeah, and of course, not, either we should say we want to change some things, and here's our plan to do it, or we should approve it, you know?
Right. Okay.
All right.
So, yeah, so we'll do that for next meeting?
Yeah.
Awesome.
What else?
That's it.
All right, and I just want to apologize for what happened earlier, that was totally a political thing. I thank you for handling that. I think you guys have done a wonderful job. I think we've moved mountains without a planning director since January, and I'm very proud of what you guys have, have given to our board, and I appreciate everything you do. I think you're fantastic, and I don't want you walking away thinking we didn't do what we were supposed to do, because we did.
We've had a tough year, and...
And I, well, and I think we, we did a marijuana bylaw, you know, people like to focus on the negative, but we did a lot of great things, and I'm very proud of the board I have. And I thank you very much for your continued volunteerism.
Yeah.
And I appreciate everything you bring to our table.
Thank you, too.
Yeah, thanks, Trina, and specifically, as a board member, would like to thank you for the, uh, the work you've been doing outside of these meetings, with Carrie in particular, to help, uh, ensure a brighter, a smooth transition and a bright future for the, the planning board in terms of, A, securing, uh, uh, you know, Chantel to work with us in the interim. She's been, as people watching the meetings can tell, and she speaks a little more at each one, and the more she speaks, the better it is. Um, you know, she's been a huge asset for our planning board, and, uh, as was discussed at town meeting, getting the wheel, working with Carrie to get those wheels in motion, to get a, a position that's going to be dedicated to the planning board and a few other related important things. I really, I think your leadership and work there has been of great service to the community.
Thank you. I did talk to Carrie today, and hopefully we're going to have that job posted Monday. So that's her goal, is to get the job posted, and then we'll start the interviewing process. So hopefully we'll have someone identified and ready to rock and roll January, I'm sorry, July 1st.
I hope for January.
That'd be great.
So, no, and that's, you know, Chantel is getting more comfortable, I just think, with us, with the board.